Let's call the meeting to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director Mann?
Present.
Marquez?
Here.
Celio?
Is here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation today is going to be done by Pastor Tim Christensen from Lancaster Baptist Church.
Let's go to Lord in Prayer. Father, we thank you for your patience, your grace, and your favor in our lives individually and in the life of this city. We know that your word says, "Except the Lord build the house, they labor in vain that build it." So we pray that you would do what only you can do in this place tonight and in the lives of the people of this city. We recognize that our nation celebrates its 232nd birthday next week, Lord, and that's a reminder of your faithfulness to us as a nation. We pray for our troops' safety, for our leaders' guidance, for our nation's citizens, especially those of us who know you and know your word, to be the salt and the light that the Lord Jesus has instructed us to be. We pray that your presence would not only be manifested in this meeting, but also, Lord, that it would make a difference in this meeting, in the lives of the good people that have been asked to represent citizens, in the lives and families and homes and businesses of the citizens of this city. And we once again thank you and acknowledge you for your faithfulness and ask and invite your presence in our midst tonight. We pray these things in thanks and in the name and on the merit of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Oh. Tom Lacy, you gave me a card with your title. I've got it. What's doing that? It's my phone. Hold on. Hold on. Sorry about that. Okay. You're the senior Assembly Member. Is that right, Tom? And Tom is gonna first, you're gonna drape the flag? Is that correct?
The flag is okay.
Flag is okay. Okay. So you're gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Is that right? And you also had something you wanted to say first?
No. No. See, I wear this hat because I consider to be a uniform, so I render the hand salute. Well, can the rest of us place our right hand over our hearts?
Okay. Thank you.
Repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Rosigian, are we gonna do the water issues first?
I think you could probably do the other two presentations first and the water after.
Okay. Great. Should we do Sean Rowe first? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rowe? Come on down. Normally, they give me this stuff and help me say whatever I want to say. That's why I get into so much trouble all the time. But with you, I've been given strict instructions that I should read because your accomplishments are really good. You were the first recipient of the athlete of the month award, and let me tell you a little bit about this man. This is Sean Rowe. He has been a starting shortstop for the past three seasons at Fort Hill, and they claim to have won the championship. During his sophomore season in 2006, Fort Hill continued their success through the playoffs by C.I.F. Southern Section Division Community Association and gave play at Estes Home Field of the Los Angeles Angels. He has been selected to the Golden Lake First Team the past three seasons, was the Golden Lake Most Valued Player this season. He is also named to the first team All-Session Three Squad this season. Plays on the, not only plays on the field, who are these? Let me get the fit of some tissue before I show them. Plays on the field and highest academic achievement in the classroom, including a career .39 grade point average, while being one of the most successful athletes in the world. He's written a scholarship to play baseball at Loyola Marymount University beginning this fall. And he's done some other department work. Yeah, help me out. Now, Mark is the baseball guy. I'm obviously, so tell us about it. Is that my name? Yes, come on. Then if you get one of these mics, they'd be able to hear you.
Hopefully, these'll pick me up.
Okay. I think there's an extremely rare occurrence that Mr. Rowe did. Baseball, a perfect game occurs when a pitcher not only does allow a hit, but does not allow a single batter to reach base. That's happened in 100 years of baseball only 14 times, okay? But as rare as a perfect game, there are two feats that are even more uncommon. Hitting a homerun in one game has only happened 13 times in the major leagues in the history of baseball. Eight or more, excuse me. After having 10 or more RBIs in a game has created less, 12 times. Run that again. Someone's on base. But on April 18th, was a very memorable day. Fort Hill played Little Rock. The game only lasted five innings because Fort Hill was ahead by 10 runs. Very most five innings, Sean Rowe not only hit four home runs, but he also drove in 12 runs. He attained two rare milestones. The first is Sean's four home runs included a solo homerun, a two-run shot, a three-run homer, and a grand slant.
Wow.
It's better. Baseball historians have researched this and throughout the United States and have failed to produce any documented evidence at any level of baseball that this feat has ever occurred, a homerun cycle. So by all documented evidence, this is the first time it has ever occurred, and it occurred right here in the Antelope Valley by this gentleman. The Dodgers honor Sean for this, and for that, we'd also like to honor him too. You have a combination that lists all of those accomplishments, but more importantly, you were the first, and you deserve it, because in fact, what we discussed, who would be who would do this after the program? The city manager said, "There is one guy that has to be the person to do this." And, you know, I wanna try, I didn't think we were allowed to blow on him. He was that adamant about it, and I can see why. You were truly deserved, and you so much should. And are we gonna do the United Way now? And so, didn't they have that giant check we were? Oh, it's back here. Mark, can you help me with this? We don't have a script, and this is really quite an accomplishment that I would like everyone to know about. Now, if this passes, it's gonna break your foot. This represents, this represents a collection from all the city employees. This is our commitment this year, and from the city employees, as you can see, $22,270 is going to be in the way. That's a record for the city of Lancaster. I want to particularly thank our young J.C.s who put this campaign together. It's a fabulous campaign, and I'm very, very proud of the staff for donating this amount of funds. I'd like to acknowledge Luis, who sort of spearheaded this, and a lot of folks helped us all there. But thank you very much.
I'm David McChalk, and I'm the Regional Director for United Way here in the Antelope Valley, and I too want to commend the city of Lancaster employees for their tremendous commitment in helping local residents who are in need. These funds will go to help people in need right here in the Lancaster area, and we're working very hard at United Way to bring more resources to the Antelope Valley. My charge and the charge of our local board, led by Bob McPherson, is to try to generate as much funds as possible to the agencies here in Lancaster, in Palmdale, and the Antelope Valley as a whole. So that is our mission, and we thank you very much for your tremendous support. And Sue, real quickly, wants to recognize...
Well, I want to thank Mr. Rosigian for supporting the campaign, Luis as well for cheering the campaign in as committee, Patty Garde, Rhonda Perez, Heather Swan, and Heather Kennedy. Thank you so much. Stand up and let everybody know. It's a collaborative effort, and we really appreciate this committee's help.
Was it for me? Sir, was it for me? The father, was it for me? You'd be sort of wrong.
Well, Seth?
You know, Sue and I went to high school together. She aged better.
Hit that one more time? Okay, we're good.
Thank you. You get to keep that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Did you go the full complement of years to high school? Did you go the full complement of years to high school? Are you making fun of me for dropping out? You know more than I am myself. Oh, okay. All right. She actually graduated, though. City Manager, do we have any items to be removed from the consent calendar?
No, we don't, sir. You have one more presentation first, the Farm Bureau?
Oh, we do. I'm sorry, we do. PH six will remove and can future notice or future meeting, but we do have the Farm Bureau presentation first.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just, real briefly, before they start the presentation, just remind the council that the subject of this presentation is a subject of ongoing litigation. So we need to be careful about how we address the issues raised and understand that many of these issues will be resolved in the court as part of the litigation.
Yes, well, good afternoon, Mayor Paris, council members and staff. We're here today because we would like to talk a little bit about what's going on with adjudication. I think there's some issues that are happening now that are gonna be very disastrous to the city of Lancaster and particularly the community. I want to thank and acknowledge Mayor Paris and Councilman Marquez for their interest and desire to look into some of these issues on behalf of their citizens and the rest of the community. The extensive legal experience of Mayor Paris is really gonna be helpful, I think, in these regards. This presentation has been scheduled for months, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this important issue. I will go over some background and mention some recent developments. I think most of you know, but if you don't, a groundwater adjudication is a court process in which they determine who has groundwater pumping rights and how to manage the basin in the future. As a matter of introduction, my name is Gene Nebberkirk. My family's been farming in Antelope Valley for 89 years. I'm on the Farm Bureau Board of Directors and the Water Committee. One of the founding members, along with several other people in the audience of AGWA, which is a group of landowners that pool their funds together to pay legal expenses, and we represent a lot of other landowners before the court. I'm on the adjudication technical committee, attend to settlement conferences, and attend to court hearings. Some of these activities are subject to confidentiality restraints, so there's nothing I will not tell you today that's not public knowledge. I want to introduce Laura Blank, who prepared these slides and helped set up this presentation. The city of Lancaster has...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You're being a little modest. You're also a Ph.D., and from what I've been able to find out is you are probably one of the most knowledgeable people about water in the entire Southern California area. And so this isn't just anybody talking to us, this is somebody who really knows his stuff.
Well, thank you very much. You're gonna tend to embarrass me, though, if you do that, but thank you very much. The city of Lancaster has joined in a group self-named the Public Water Suppliers, which are or will be suing about 190,000 parcels of land in the valley to take away the rights to pump groundwater and to participate in ownership and control of a groundwater storage district. The concerns I raise are those of all landowners, whether they're in the city or not, and not just farmers. I want to set the stage, list damages to the community, and give suggestions for your consideration. Because of limited time available, I'm not gonna read all the slides because we prepared them for handouts at the front desk, and people can take them home, and you can take them home if you choose. The public water suppliers consist essentially Los Angeles County Water Works District Number 40, City of Lancaster, City of Palmdale, and a bunch of water districts. And the court, the community concerns are that the public water suppliers are trying to take away some of their most important property rights. They're using taxpayer monies to fund this effort, and landowners have to go into their pockets to employ lawyers to protect themselves. In the court documents, the public water suppliers have essentially asserted what they call prescriptive rights. Now, I don't want to get into that now, but essentially, to do that, they've had to allege to the court that they've been impumfally, their groundwater pumping in the past has been unlawful, and I want to hit on that in the next slide. They're also alleging municipal priority and saying some agriculture irrigation in the valley is a waste and unreusable use of water and by the California Constitution is unlawful. In response to that, the landowners have said the public water suppliers must import and recharge the water that they've said and alleged that they've been pumping unlawfully for decades. And there's also suggestions to the court to enjoin the public water suppliers from issuing will serve notices and from pumping groundwater. The landowners are particularly concerned because they feel they've not been served these 190,000 approximately, and they've not been notified as to what's going on. The adjudication issue is important to them, have been kept out of newspapers, and they want to have a trial in San Jose rather than the Antonovich courthouse so everybody can listen to what's going on. The small pumpers and small landowners appear by class action litigation will be represented by attorneys that have no bases or no background in water law. The public water suppliers recently have convinced the court to rush to trial before landowners are ready for the purpose of setting a basin yield. I feel that this basin yield is so low, so it's gonna cut all the current pumpers back at least 50 percent. And by rush to court, I mean if there's anybody here today that is not employed an expert, they have two days from today to designate their expert and get a report into the court. The landowners who are currently in the case asked the court to put the trial date off, and the city of Lancaster, your attorneys representing you in the litigation blocked this effort. As you know, most landowners are not in a case, and I personally feel this is a horrible blatant denial of due process. And the consequences of this, this litigation may, if a low safe yield is set, litigation may go on for years, decades perhaps. The court may prevent the public water suppliers from pumping out of the ground, they may make them make up the water that they've said they pump unlawfully and all sorts of things. I think this is really hurting the building industry, and it's gonna create chaos in the valley. The remedies I would suggest for your kind consideration is to give your attorneys instructions to engage in meaningful settlement negotiations. Instruct them to join us in asking the court to vacate the upcoming trial date on October 6th. The reason for that, you can't have meaningful settlement negotiations if there's a trial date hanging over your head and your opposition thinks they can really take it to you. And I would suggest, City of Lancaster, as well as all public agents, is to manage your attorneys closely and carefully. Be sure they're not just out to win, be sure they're looking after the community interest and the city's interest. And also, see if you can get these 190,000 landowners somehow notified as to what's going on. And also, I would like to ask you to dismiss the causes of action in a court that are designated to take the landowners' rights, and by that I mean a lot of your citizens. And I would suggest you recommend a water storage district under the whole valley that shares the groundwater storage resources with all the landowners as well as the public agencies. And I would finally recommend that Lancaster take the lead and disengage themselves from this public water supplier group and adopt a process that works in close harmony with the landowners. I see in the audience people from, folks from Los Angeles and Kern County, town councils, mutual water companies, municipal advisory councils, farmers, and other landowners. And Mayor Paris, I don't know what your preference is, but according to your timer, I've only taken about seven minutes. There's some time left, and you may ask me questions, or you may want to ask these other people questions. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you. No, you can't sit down yet.
I thought I'd get away easy.
Just so you're aware, since we've met, I've been talking to the city attorney, I've been talking to the city manager, and we're looking at this. It's a fascinating subject in that there doesn't appear to be an easy answer to it. But I want you and everyone in the audience to know at least what the mayor thinks about it, and the councilors will chime in if they disagree or if they want to add anything to it. I get disturbed with government in the idea that it's whatever's the interest of the city at all cost. I don't know that that's our role. I think what our role should really be is what is the best interests of the citizens according to what the law is. Meaning, oftentimes, I see government able to step all over people. I see it all the time in court because, you know, they have this army of lawyers, and money doesn't seem to matter to them, and I don't mean that from a city perspective, I mean that from a larger government perspective. That's not how we're gonna run this city, by my way of thinking. But the problem we're having with this water issue is, what disturbs me the most is the subsidence problem. You know, if we delay, are we going to lose more of the aquifer than we already have? You know, there's some things you can't get back, and that's one of them. And so that's a serious concern in regards to any delay. In talking to the city attorney, what we've discussed is I don't understand why we're not submitting this to an arbitration with a date certain and doing it that way, which would be a lot more manageable cost-wise for everyone involved. And time-wise also. So on one hand, we have your issue of the time that we talked. On the other side of this is if I, if you're wrong and the other people are right, we're losing part of the aquifer. Is that correct?
Well, the aquifer, a lot of people try to present the problem much worse than it is, and I'd like to point out to you, from approximately 1978 to 2002, the storage in the basin, that's the water in the aquifer, was essentially constant. Now, it may or may not be going down a little bit. There's some areas, most areas of the valley, and especially the rural areas, that the water's coming up. It's only primarily in the residential areas, and particularly the city of Lancaster and Palmdale, that the water's going down. So the number one assumption is we don't have a huge problem, but we need to address it. We need to address... We need to address it for the future, because we don't have enough water to support development in the future. Now, one comment you made is that I think there's a fairly simple solution, if we can get the game players out of this process. And I mean the technical people and the lawyers. And the framework of this solution is that-
Not all the lawyers.
I know, that's no surprise. Except for you, of course. And I really like these comments you made about your role in city government, and I wish we would hear that more around it at all public agency. I think that's really important. I think the key to a solution is the same key that we proposed in a proposal we sent out back, which you haven't seen, back in April of 2004. And we've essentially suggested, which happens in a lot of basins that go through adjudications, I'm not saying all, but a lot of basins, is you don't cut anybody back now. Because the technical people really don't know, they don't have enough data. And I think it's important to adopt a solution. You let people continue to pump at their current rates, you monitor the basin all over the place, you take good data, and don't cut people back for five or 10 years unless there's irrefutable concrete evidence that there's a necessity to do that. And then there's a few details around the thing, but I think in essence, that's the solution to this thing, and I think we can do it pretty quickly and pretty efficiently.
Thank you. Did the city attorney want to add anything?
I would ask that maybe Doug Everts, who's special counsel that's handling the litigation, that he might want to make a few comments on this?
Oh, I thought you were on their team.
We're chatting here and getting along right now, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. We truly do have a desire to settle this case. I have known Mr. Nebiker now for a couple of years, he's a great gentleman, I respect his opinion. I can say that there are other technical experts who disagree with his opinions. I'm not saying one's right or the other, but there is disagreement. And the desire is to get at a consensus and a solution that makes sense. There are some experts out there now that say there is a serious problem that must be addressed now. And that's what caused the trial court to set this October trial date. The October trial date is not going to determine anybody's water rights, it's not a full trial of all the issues. The limited purposes of this October trial date is to decide essentially two issues: how much water's coming into the basin, and how much is being consumed on an annual basis. And the trial judge said he wants to have that information now. And I think a number of the parties, including myself, and I believe maybe Mr. Nebiker, believe that once certain core data is achieved, that there can be a solution for all the parties. And we're definitely interested in doing that. I heard the discussion about an arbitration. I think conceptually, that makes good sense. The problem with that being is we can't force an arbitration on anyone, and there are over several hundred parties in the lawsuit right now, unless we can get everybody to agree to that, we're not going to get there.
What's this, I get the sense that it's Lancaster that's pushing it to trial in October?
I would not say that's completely accurate. We're part of a larger group that wants to take the case to trial in October. And the reason for that, as I should mention, the judge set an earlier trial date than what anybody had ever recommended. The judge believes that, number one, he needs to get his arms around this issue, because the vast majority of the technical experts say there is a really significant problem out there that needs to be addressed now. And the judge wants to hear that information, can hear Mr. Nebiker or his group's information, all the other experts' information, and make a decision based upon what he hears. But again, I want to emphasize that the trial that's set in October is not going to determine anyone's water rights, nor is there any desire on the city's part, at least from my end, to take anybody's water rights. I should add that in addition to the agencies that were listed up on that word today, the federal government wants to take the case to trial in October, AVEC does, and the county sanitation districts do, as well as the City of Los Angeles.
Do you have any-
Yeah, just a partial rebuttal of what he said. There's overwhelming evidence that the basin is not in big trouble now. I know there's people that want to indicate that, but that's just not true. And you can determine that by getting the standing water levels all throughout the valley, and I could provide that information for you. I could also provide you graphs of the storage, that's amount of water in the basin every year. And if you would like to do that, or your councilpeople would like to have that information, I'd be happy to do that. We feel what the public water suppliers are trying to do is rush this to trial before any of the landowners can hire experts and get them to study it. And to set an artificially low yield and constrict all the landowners into that amount, most of the farmers in the valley cannot be cut back 50 percent or more than 50 percent. This will create an undue burden on the mutuals and all that sort of stuff, and it'll probably drive the farmers out of the valley. And then we feel a lot of public water suppliers, and I'm not saying Doug Everett, but a lot of the public water suppliers, we feel, feel that they'll be able to take our water that way. And then on the water coming in, the imported water from AVEC, we feel that they're putting abnormally high return flows on our water. Now, what return flow is, is when you put, when you use water, there's a certain amount of that that percolates down to the groundwater. They're saying an absurd amount of that water goes down to the groundwater. So there's two things they're doing to work against this. I feel they're trying to rush it to trial before any of the landowners are prepared. And if you happen to go on the court website today, you see the court is hearing probably seven, eight, or nine requests from various landowner groups that they can't make the date of two days from now to hire an expert, to designate an expert, and to put in a report. And so there's a lot of evidence, which I can provide to you to support what I said. And I want to thank you again for asking these questions.
You know, we're somewhat, I mean, there's all kinds of things I want to say right now, And I'm not sure why that's the case either. I mean, there's no secret to how litigation is done. I mean, you know, what I can tell you, we are striving to make certain that we are not a party to anybody stealing your water, regardless of how painful that might be. We're just not in the business of stealing from our citizens, or from anyone else for that matter. And we've had that discussions with the attorneys in a conference call, and we will continue to have those discussions. In regards to continuing it, I can tell you that in complex litigation, that that is not a simple thing to do. In fact, I've never been successful. And once I got a complex judge, of getting him to continue anything. They treat those courtrooms as a resource, that they guard it, and we're really not allowed to mess with it a lot. At least every time I've attempted to continue a complex litigation matter, I've always been told no. And that's been my experience. We have suggested to our council that we should not stand in the way of doing whatever we need to do to make certain you do get your experts. And with that, I think I've probably already said more than I should have. But that's where we're at. Anybody have anything?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Come on down. I mean, we're not going to let this get out of hand, and everybody, but-
Would you support, or would this council, my name is John Yucastad, Antelope Valley United Water Purveyors? Would this council support and recommend to the attorneys to make sure that all the property owners in the Antelope Valley are notified of this, that their rights are being violated, or it could be taken away from them? As it is right now, they've just, the non-pumpers class was certified not too long ago. Also, the small pumpers hasn't even been certified. None of these people have been noticed, okay? There's about 7,500 small pumpers out here in the valley that haven't been noticed. That there's going to be a hearing on the basin characteristics in October. And I think it's very important that maybe this council talks with the City of Palmdale, LA County, and gets, you know, make sure that these people get notified that their rights are being violated.
When you guys told me about that, it's astonishing to me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. How much of the presentation I've heard, an assumption that landowners' property rights are being taken away, isn't part of the purpose of this case to determine whose rights of pumping water, is it the landowner, is it a water agency, is it the city? Is that not an integral part of this case? Yeah, I think that was directed to our own legal counsel.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember Cilio. There's a clear California law that says any judgment, even settlement, has to recognize established California water rights, and yes, that'll be the purpose of the proceeding. And as I, I'm not going to discuss litigation strategy in open session, but one thing I can say is that this phase of the trial is not, is not going to determine water rights and who has what, rights to what. There may come a point in time where Lancaster parts company with some of the public water suppliers that were on that list in future phases of litigation. I'll discuss that with you separately, but again, right now, there seems to be a united front, that we need to at least get our arms around what the problem is to tackle this, so we can come up with a solution and resolve the case.
I don't know that that's accurate, and, you know, I respectfully understand the basis of your opinion. But if they set the water limits or numbers to an amount that keeps people from watering their fields, we've taken water. I'm not saying it's wrong to take it, I'm just saying it's a little more of, it has a much greater impact on the farmers, depending on how they rule. I mean, it certainly isn't dividing it up and putting percentages on it, but it would have the same effect.
There could be a scenario where, there could be a situation where there's only so much water in the basin, and California laws says you only have rights in available water supply. Now, if you took the public suppliers completely out of the equation, there still might be a scenario where the farmers alone are taking more than the safe field of the basin. And a judge would want to solve that problem, too. But these are problems that all can be solved, and we're committed to moving forward with that.
It just seems to me that the October trials are the purpose of determining how much water's coming into the valley and how much we're pumping. Without that basic, critical piece of information, we can't go anywhere.
That's what the vast majority of the people believe.
And I don't think, there's obviously genuine disagreement between even the quote "experts" over how much water we're pumping versus how much is coming in, and if the purpose of the October trial is to determine that, we need to do that first and foremost. Without that, we're all just talking a lot of hot air.
But, you know, let's be clear. We're talking about the cost of that to people of being over seven figures. I mean, this is a huge, huge litigation cost, and to act like this is a small deal for these folks is wrong. Once they have to start hiring experts-
It is a significant issue, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
It's a huge deal. If, in fact, there is not the overdrafting of our basin, as Mr. Nebiker suggested, then yeah, letting people pump at the levels they are today makes perfect sense. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. If the other batch of experts are correct, and we are massively overdrafting, and we're losing capacity, then drastic solutions would be called for. Who knows where the truth lies? It may be somewhere in the middle, it may be at either end.
Well, the biggest problem I'm having with it is, when we had a discussion, and I, what I'd like is somebody to give me in 10 pages or less what the law says about who owns the water, and what that means to own the water.
I have about a 300-page book of theories.
And what I'm hearing is that that's not out there.
Well, I did leave something for you today. It's not 10 pages, though.
And I would invite, I would invite your folks to do the same, because I would really like to know what the law is. I mean, is this a natural resource that all of us own? Is this a finite resource that comes with the title to the property, whether we've pumped it or not pumped it? Or is it owned by the people that have previously pumped it? I mean, doesn't that put it in a nutshell what the issues are? And, you know, I'm sitting up here as the mayor, and nobody can tell me what the answer is. And I find that unsettling.
I did provide you with some materials today, Mr. Mayor. I can also say that, again, case law is very clear that water rights do need to be recognized. But number two, as you'll see from the materials I gave you, that each judgment and solution for each water rights adjudication is different based upon the unique facts of that situation. Each basin is different, each river system is different, and the courts always try to strive for a resolution that makes sense with those particular factual scenarios.
The problem-
Let me answer your question, it's an equitable resolution.
The problem I have with that is, I think it's fair to the citizens of this community and to the people that are affected, before the litigation starts, for us to have a position that is founded on what is morally and ethically correct. I think it's inappropriate to go into any type of trial without being able to state that position.
Well, I agree with you.
And that's what I'm finding unsettling, is that we have not stated that position to these folks. And it shouldn't be that difficult. Maybe it is, but I've never walked into a trial that I wasn't able to say in a paragraph or less what I believed was the right outcome. And what we're doing is getting ready to go into a trial without being able to state that. And I don't like that. And I don't think anybody in this room likes that. It just doesn't seem right. At the same time, what I don't want to do is be a party to any delay that causes us to lose any of that aquifer. You know, it's like tearing up a piece of art, a piece at a time, and thinking, well, it's just a small piece. Well, no, there are no small pieces, it all matters. In regards to settling this, I can tell you with 20, and you would agree with me, that the worst place to settle your problems are in a court. It really is. It's incredibly expensive, and to say that you always get the right result is ludicrous. I do not want the city to stand in the way of trying to settle this if we can.
No, and I should mention, too, that, as Mr. Nebiker knows also, the parties have hired what we're calling a facilitator, which is essentially a settlement referee. It's a gentleman by the name of Bill Dandy, who's a well-known water expert in the state of California. I was involved in Mojave River adjudication, and we retain him in connection with that matter. And he's been holding meetings on a regular basis with all the parties, including Mr. Nebiker and his group, all the public water suppliers. In fact, a meeting's going to be held tomorrow. And again, we're working towards a solution, we're trying to reach compromise on issues where we can. And again, I'm so optimistic that there will be some kind of resolution.
And it's also my understanding that you aren't the only person pushing this, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. I, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up is that even if we took a vote and directed him to ask for a continuance, I don't think it would be of any benefit. And unless somebody can tell me with a realistic expectation that it would be a benefit, I don't know how much we can do. I do want you meeting with Mr. Nebiker whenever he wants to, and I want this to be worked out as the right thing to do, not, not the most, I mean, when you come and hire me, you hire me to win, and that's what I do. But as mayor, that's not my job. It really is my job as the mayor, that we do the right thing with these folks. And I want to make certain you understand that that is what we want to do.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I have one last question, a question of clarification. What information would the mayor and the council like from us? You'd like to know what effect the basin would undergo if there was some delay?
Yes.
You'd like to know-
I would like to know everybody's, every scientist's position on that. I don't want to know just your scientist's position. And if there's some independent group out there that has looked at this problem, I would like to know what they have to say about that.
Okay, and you would like to know-
Because, trust me, I've hired a lot of experts, and their expert abilities seem to wane as soon as they get the check from one side or the other.
You have more experience than I do, but I've seen some of that already. And the other thing, you'd like to know what benefit it would be if the City of Lancaster asked the court to vacate this October 6th date?
Yes.
I got that, too. And I don't know if I can help you morally and ethically, but if you wouldn't mind, I could take a crack at that. The other thing is, is there anything else you can think of in terms of information that you would like?
Anything you think I should read, two pages or less per subject, would be, and the reason I say that is because we get thousands of pages every week to read about various things, and if you really want me to pay attention to it, it has to be as concise as possible.
Well, I think the other issue is traditional water right law and how this adjudication is going to affect that. Well, I think it's quite clear, and we have our marching orders, and again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be less than 30 seconds.
Yes, sir.
Two things, with respect to the trial date, there have been two requests already made to the trial judge to continue the date, and he's rejected both. Secondly, with the expert information you've requested, this technical committee that Mr. Nebiker mentioned previously, has issued a report that came out just, I think, on Thursday of last week. I gave Mr. Williams a CD with that report. Unfortunately, I wouldn't call it concise, it's two volumes that are about that. It's two volumes that are about that thick. But it contains the opinions and conclusions of this technical committee, which included all the experts, not lawyers, but the hydrologists, geologists, et cetera.
Was there any attempt for everybody to agree on an expert?
On one expert?
For each of those fields?
I don't think there was full agreement. I know Mr. Nebiker participated in that process. He submitted all his information to the group, and some agreed with his information, some did not.
You know, you and I both know, experts become... Expert witnesses become professional witnesses, and there is a vast difference between the two.
I know what you mean.
And if we could avoid that somehow, it'd certainly be beneficial to the city.
Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Nebiker, I'd be happy to read whatever you have to offer. I actually like reading this kind of stuff.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your interest.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor Parrish, may I have a card up there?
Sure. Come on down.
My name is Pat Keeler. I own a hundred-and-forty-acre tree farm. For seven years now, I've been keeping track of my wells. And a USGS fellow came out, United States Geological Survey. They come out and they survey the wells every year, sometimes twice a year. They've been doing this since 1932. Now, I've got a master's degree in microbiology, so I understand a lot of scientific stuff. And he was explaining to me all the stuff that was happening, where the faults are, where the water falls, and different levels. And he says there has been no significant change in the water level since 1932, except when an earthquake happens. So I got curious. I was one of the hundred-and-forty people that got served with the subpoena. And it said on there, "Hundred-and-forty people of different names," and then it said, "Twenty-two-thousand John Does." Well, I agree, that's a little unfair to the John Does, and there's a lot more than twenty-two thousand. My point is, is if you do an FOI with the USGS, they will give you all the water data from Mojave, Roseman, all the way down to Aquedalce, Acton, all the way into Santa Clarita. They've been keeping track of this stuff every year scientifically. And my water at my place has, this year, dropped one inch in one well, went up a foot in another well, which is forty feet from the surface. The lady next door to me has got five foot from the surface, and the one that dropped an inch is a hundred-and-nineteen feet. So in the seven years I've been keeping track of this, and every week I go down and drop the string and hole, I haven't seen any drop in the level. And we're in a drought right now.
The problem that I understand with that is that it's different depending on where...
Different areas. I am on an underground river. John Colander, who is up above me, is on an underground river. Dave Hoppy, who is up above him, is on an underground same river. The river goes over to One Hundred Seventy Street, surfaces, and then disappears, which is the water you guys get. And that river hasn't changed.
You know, I can assure you that it's in the city's best interest that we're not losing water. I mean, we are...
I am suggesting that maybe...
We are worried about this as you are.
You contact the USGS and get a copy of their information.
I like that idea.
And I actually plotted all the stuff. I mean, I spent a week on my computer and plotted a lot of it. And I saw no perceptible change, except in 1979 and 1991, both earthquakes. Now, when the seventy-nine earthquake came, according to the drillers, and I know this because I used to be the local explosives guy, and the drillers used to hire me to knock their bits off when they get stuck. So I talked to them a lot. And they were telling me that in 1979, just before the earthquake, the water dropped faster than they could put the pumps down. And then that's where a lot of the alfalfa fields went under. And by the time the USGS got back in January to check, go around the gear, to check the level of the water, it was back to normal. You've got six sources of water here, and it's pretty hard to suck it dry. The water companies, probably where they have their wells, is not a good spot, so they want to steal ours. Alls I would like you to do is get the scientific information from the USGS, make your own decision.
You will.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozegi, I'm sure we have that information someplace, right? If not, can we get it?
Mr. Mayor, we have a number of items of information from USGS. I'm not familiar with what this gentleman is talking about on annual monitoring and records since 1932, so we'll research that and see if we can find it. If necessary, we'll contact him.
Thank you.
We will also, sir, provide copies of all of the... For all of the council of the information that Mr. Everett has provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Parrish, if you can't find it, after the meeting, I'll give you my email. I'll give you the name of the gentleman in charge of the well surveys, and I have six-hundred-and-fifty pages of a copy of the well reports for the last thirty-two years.
Anybody do a summary?
Two pages or less.
There's over forty-two thousand wells in the area.
Thank you. Anybody else have a burning desire? Good. Thank you very much. Then we'll move on. And let's keep the communication open.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute recess. Okay. We're back in session.
They need that for the video. That's how they seek the sound. That's what they told me. You're scaring Councilmember Marcus. I told him we're going to get you a rubber mallet next time. How many years I've been wanting to do this?
Okay. We're back in business. We removed something from the consent calendar, is that right?
On the city side, PH six, the public hearing. The consent calendar for both the agency and the city remains intact.
On the agency, isn't there something I need to recuse myself from?
Mr. Mayor, on RCC two, I would advise you to disqualify yourself and not participate in that decision.
With the exception of RCC two, do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's unanimous, and I will leave the room while they do RCC, and I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Smith.
RCC two is on the floor. Do I hear any motions?
Move adoption RCC two.
Do you hear a second?
I second that.
Take a vote.
Turn it in. Renee Guzman.
We turn the gavel over to the mayor?
Maybe not. Maybe it's a different...
Maybe I shouldn't. He's banging it too much.
Renee Guzman. Renee Guzman. I didn't look. Let's see what they have to say. Renee.
Okay. And we have a joint public hearing on the budget, and we're going to do that during the city council portion, is that it?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All right. So we can go on to the council now?
On the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor, we need to remove CC sixteen. We have two speakers' cards.
And I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently constituted.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. On CC sixteen, we have David Paul and Lyle Talbot. David, do you want to go first? And Mr. Talbot, it's been so long since I've seen you. It's been years.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening. I was interested in reading about this new proposal, CC sixteen, and I just wondered if there was any way to get any more information about it. I would like to see... You know, Buckminster Fuller said thirty years ago that pollution in its forms are natural resources. We haven't figured out how to use. So certainly, we're getting around to this now, and that's a good thing. I would just like to know where this plant would be located and all those things, the power source, if we're going to draw the power from the grid. Some of the chemicals, solvents are very detrimental to the groundwater supply. So these are all just things that I would like to know, like you want to know where the water comes from. Let's call the governor and ask him, because... Or who owns that water? You know, I'm like you. I want answers to certain questions, so that's all this was about. I would just like to know the who, what, when, where, why, and how's of this thing, if I could get them.
And so do we, just so you understand. All we're doing here is keeping our options open. There's not any decision being made whatsoever. We just want to be in a position that if we want to do it, we can. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Talbot?
Thank you. I think you have my address and on your card and my phone number. But I picked up the Valley Press yesterday morning. Here's a story about this demo facility. I thought it was a democratic thing, political. And it appeared right above where you usually have an ad, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's on Wednesdays.
So I sat down during the day and scribbled out some notes and got them on my word processor. And this is to you from myself as a member of Desert Citizen Against Pollution called DCAP. I hope you got a copy.
I did. I read it.
I can mouth it here in a couple minutes.
Okay.
The council is to consider a demonstration trash-to-energy facility on Tuesday, 24th. Valley Press reported on the 23rd. Materials Recovery Facility, MRF, or MRF. It's the sugar-coated jargon that integrated waste management so deftly uses to sidestep environmental concerns. As a member of DCAP, I would simply call it a trash incinerator in the need of mega-mitigation measures. Back in June 2001, due to another energy crisis, a similar proposal would have built a power plant on Avenue H, just east of the railroad overpass. If built, it would have allowed to disperse fifty pounds per day of pollutants instead of the normal twenty-five pounds permitted for that size of facility. To escape into the atmosphere, that was on page one of the Valley Press. On page three, the same issue, Mayor Frank Roberts spoke to the need to protect the AVR quality so as not to interfere with Edwards Air Force Base flight testing and photography missions. But with the valley's prevailing winds, those pollutants would have crossed over, directly over the runway complex at Edwards. At the time, there was even speculation that the sewage water, Lancaster's treatment plant, might be used in some way to cool the power plant. So that would be like green fuel from brown water. So as the council considers what Mr. Williams may assume to be a gift from the Integrated Waste Management Task Force to our community, I say to the council, take a long look at this disposal proposal and recall the many burnt offerings from down below, such as toxic waste, sewage, sludge, city trash, prisons, and parolees. And never look a gift horse in the mouth, I've been told, to which I say, just make darn sure which end of the horse you're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. It's good advice. Do we have anyone else?
No, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Just to reiterate that, what you did, Mr. Mayor, is that at this time, we're not adopting any policy or any type of contract with such facility. We're just wanting to be put on the list so we can see what they're offering. And that's what... So I'm in support of that.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So I'll move that we adopt resolution number zero eight dash four nine.
Second? Is there a second?
I second that.
Let's vote. Okay. Let's open the public hearings on PH one, and we'll hear from the Economic Development Director.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed with public hearing number one, my intention is to abstain for the same reasons stated in the previous meeting. Counsel, do I need to step out of the room during this time?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I... Maybe we should announce that PH six was pulled because I think we announced that it was pulled before the six o'clock hour. So just in case anybody did come in at the six o'clock hour.
Okay.
Because it was noticed for that.
It was after six.
It was after six that we noticed? Okay. Sorry. Thanks.
Good. Yes, sir.
Mayor Parrish, member of the council, this is the annual consideration of a parking and business improvement district assessment for the downtown. This is a program that the city's been doing since 1989. It's in partnership with the Lancaster Old Town Site Committee, and I'm here to tell you that we have a terrific relationship with that group. They've been very active this year. They've participated in the downtown celebration events. They've also purchased twenty-eight banners advertising those downtown events. And they also are participating in purchasing some bikes for sheriff's deputies in the downtown. So this is an assessment district that allows you to have promotion through the Lancaster Old Town Site Committee and be happy to answer any questions. It's a routine matter.
Any questions? Thank you. Do you have any communications?
No, sir. No communications.
Any speaker's cards?
Any speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor?
We'll close the public hearing. Any discussion, motion?
Move adoption resolution number zero eight dash five zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with Mr. Mann abstaining. Actually, he's not abstaining. He recused himself. Okay. On public hearing number two, we'll hear from Randy Williams, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor Parrish and council members. This evening, we have several actions before you pertaining to the benefit assessment districts. As I know the council is well aware, Proposition 218, back in 1996, established several new rules by which cities and counties and others who had various assessment districts that provide special benefit needed to follow in order to continue to maintain the public's acceptance of those benefit assessment districts and the funding that is provided through them. Let me start by saying, in each case, all monies that go into any of these assessment districts is separately received and placed into an account that is solely used for the purpose of maintaining the facilities within those assessment districts. So what I would like to do this evening is to start, first of all, with this public hearing number two, to discuss the Lancaster Drainage Benefit Assessment District. This district has been in place for some time since the city took it over from the county. Annually, we prepare, and that's what we have before you this evening. First, an engineer's report, and we conduct the public hearing. This is that public hearing. At an earlier council meeting, the engineer's report was presented to the council, at which time the council had an opportunity to review it. So now what we are doing is offering to the public an opportunity to speak to you as to their feelings about the proposed modifications to the drainage maintenance district. In reality, there are no changes to those who had... Who were originally annexed in. Only those that have been annexed in since about 2005 see any changes. At that time, there was a change that was made that allowed for an indexed increase, if necessary, to those later properties annexed in. All previous and earlier properties that had been annexed in continue to be assessed by this recommendation at the originally established rate of fifty dollars for benefit assessment unit. For the others, since 2005, that have been annexed in, each year, we evaluate whether it is necessary for us to increase that amount by a previously agreed to... by a previously agreed to index that is applied against those rates. That index is the five-county CPI adjustment, which for the current year proposes that there be a 3.1 percent increase to that amount. That has the effect of those that, instead of paying what they formerly were paying at fifty-six dollars and forty-six per unit, to grow to fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents per unit. A unit is considered the same as a single-family dwelling unit in the amount of water and benefit that they would accrue. A business might actually have multiple benefit assessment units, or for that matter, even partial benefit assessment units. Not all of the city of Lancaster is annexed into the Drainage Benefit Assessment District, and this action does nothing to change that. If there are questions of the council, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think we're ready to hear from the public, should there be public speakers.
Any questions? We have any, well, first of all, any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion, motion?
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 08-51.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number three. Oh, you're still there?
Yes, sir. I've got so many lined up here, I thought I would just keep this spot warm. Public hearing number three is the same kind of action, but in this case, it's for the Lancaster Lighting Benefit Assessment District. This is the district from which all street lighting expenses are paid as well as traffic signal expenses, as allowed by, as directed by state code. This district is one that we mentioned to you during the budget process as being underfunded because it does not generate sufficient revenues to pay the expenses of the district. We had, before some of the present council were seated back in October, a vote of the city to consider some changes, and that ballot was denied by the voters at that time, the property owners who were entitled to vote. So what we have before you this evening then is a, again, as with the last one, a recommendation that for those who have been annexed and against which an indexed amount is allowed, that that index for the upcoming year would be applied and that in the amount of 3.1 percent. And that would raise then the expense to a benefit assessment district to eighty-three dollars and six cents for the upcoming fiscal year. There are a number of parcels, not many, but some. In fact, there's an attachment to your report that shows that number to be 1,485 and some change benefit assessment units that continue to be assessed at the originally established rate of forty-five units. I'm sorry, forty-five dollars per unit. And plus, there are questions of the council. I think that the rest of information, as I shared, pertaining to Drainage Benefit Assessment District is probably appropriate to this discussion.
Thank you. Any questions? Any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker's cards?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion, a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 08-52.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Public hearing item number four, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. Public hearing number four pertains to the Lancaster Landscape Maintenance District. These are a number of districts that the city has taken over from developers who have made improvements along perimeters of housing tracks or, in some cases, medians on streets where medians were installed with landscaping. And this is the means by which the city recovers the expense of maintaining those on behalf of those various previously constructed developments. Again, the Landscape Maintenance District has been in effect for some number of years with Lancaster, and the originally annexed or accepted into the district members or properties were paying at a rate of eighty dollars per unit, basically per housing unit. In 2005, 2006, again, that fiscal year, we did allow, the council did allow and approve that there would be an index applied against it, the same index here as in the other two, 3.1 percent. Would raise the new collected amount per benefit assessment unit for those annexed since 2005 to ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. The revenues that will be collected are sufficient, but not excessive to what is necessary to operate that benefit assessment district. If there are questions, again, be happy to answer them.
Any questions? City clerk, we have any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or motion?
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 08-53.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing, item number five. What'd you do, save all these up?
Yes, sir. It's a busy time for us. The next public hearing pertains to the establishment or the adoption of, approval of rates that are proposed by Waste Management, who provides solid waste and recycling services to residential properties, commercial properties, industrial properties. In fact, is our sole franchisee for that purpose within the city limits of Lancaster. Last year, after about nine months of negotiating with Waste Management, a new contract was adopted by the city council for, I should say, a new franchise was adopted by the city council under which Waste Management was allowed to continue their sole ownership, if you will, of the franchise to provide those services within the city of Lancaster. One of the requirements imposed upon them was that at any time that they chose to increase the rates, they had to specifically file petition to the city proposing what those rates were to be. We established through that franchise a formula by which rates would normally be calculated, and only in extreme circumstances would we be deviating from that particular approach. There were several factors, five factors in total, that were to be looked at. They included the cost of labor, the cost of fuel, the cost of equipment, the cost of actual disposal, and anything else that might be a cost raising or a cost to the Waste Management operations. There were leading factors in that franchise agreement that were negotiated included, as well as an index change. And the indexes here were not tied only to the five-county standard cost of living or CPI adjustment, because since fuel is such a high cost and some other elements were such a high cost, we tied them to other established nationally-recognized rates or indexes for that purpose. So what is before you this evening then is a proposal to adopt new rates. There's a Exhibit A that shows what those rates would be. And these are consistent with the franchise agreement. They are not, in no case are any increases proposed above what that formula would acknowledge. And staff thinks that these are fair rates and therefore recommends that the council accept those rates by Waste Management on their behalf, and then we allow, beginning the first of July, that those rates would be incorporated into Waste Management Services. Let me give you an example. The effect of these rate increase would be for a single-family home that would have three carts that would be provided to them for solid waste disposal, recyclable disposals, and also green waste disposal. Rather than the twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents paid per month in 2007, 2008, the new rate for 2008, 2009 would be twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents. There are some similar increases in all of the other categories, including those for commercial industrial properties. If there are questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
What happens if we don't approve them?
I guess if you don't accept them, then Waste Management will be back in, and they'll probably be trying to get something that is greater than this, especially considering the significant increases in fuel costs that has occurred in recent weeks. It's not a slam dunk, I think they'll be back. And if they were unsatisfactory in getting what they thought was necessary to continue their business, they might ask that they be allowed to withdraw from that franchise, and then we would have to go out and negotiate with other solid waste recycling services, and no doubt would not be able to achieve rates any better than what is proposed in this recommendation to you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
We're raising the trash rates and we don't have a speaker card? What's the matter with you folks? Okay. All right, let's close the public hearing. Any discussion or motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 08-54.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll now open the public hearing on, public hearing item number six. Oh, we pulled it? I thought we pulled it until six o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, we actually have a new recommendation, which is something that the council needs to take action on, since this was a public, a notice public hearing.
Are we in public hearing six?
The proceedings associated with this are significantly, you know, they're protracted, and so we're not ready to come to you this evening. In fact, rather than, as this recommendation says, to continue this until July 26, we would ask that you just pull it all together. And when we're able to come back, we will go through the regular noticing process as if it were a new item. And so everyone will have their due process in this case.
Okay, does that require a motion to pull it?
Yeah, we just pulled it.
Okay, it's just pulled? Okay, great. Thank you. And item number seven. Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. Item number seven is a proposal to vacate a segment of Beach Avenue at its north end. This is up by the, it's along the western frontage of Sierra Highway in the area where Wood Carter Park will be constructed. It is a segment of road that is essentially, I should say, very rarely used by anyone. There is nothing that it goes to except the former Carter properties that were at that particular location. What we would like to do, and is recommending to the council, is that we vacate that segment as shown on the diagram provided to you as Exhibit A. It's the hash-marked area that's shown on that enclosure. We would propose to vacate that as a public right-of-way for roads and sidewalks and curbs and gutters and so forth, and allow it instead to be incorporated as part of the future park facility. City will actually just be changing its ownership from right-of-way for public use in general, for streets and so forth, to the use as a park. And this is consistent with the general plan. It's been presented to the Planning Commission that agrees with this as being in conformance with the general plan and their conditions. And so we are recommending to the council then that we vacate this. This is, again, a type of action that does require a public hearing, so that's why we have it before you. In case there is some comment by the public, questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's close the public hearing. Any discussion or motion?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 08-55.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Let's open the public hearing on item number eight. And Mr. Ludeke, the planning director.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
While Mr. Ludeke is getting ready, I need to preface this presentation. As the, this issue has progressed and changed over time, the recommendations have been sometimes different and sometimes inconsistent. So I want to make clear that some of the conditions have changed. Where we're at now, and I want to be very clear, is staff is recommending that the appeal be denied and the Planning Commission's decision be upheld. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This particular item involves the appeal of a Planning Commission denial of a conditional use permit application. That application involves the Holiday Skating Rink located on 23rd Street West, north of Avenue I. In May of 2007, the owners of that facility filed an application requesting a conditional use permit that would allow them to hold events other than the skating activities that they currently hold. They also requested as a part of that that they be allowed what's known as a tavern license for the sale of beer on the site. We had had, over a couple of years, requests that had come in on an individual basis at the location for special events, specifically concerts, that also involved the sale of alcohol. A number of those events, including some that were done by promoters no longer associated with this particular business, did create some concerns from the standpoint of the Sheriff's Department. Staff's comment to the applicant was that if they wanted to really look at this site as a potential site for those kinds of events on a regular basis, that instead of filing numerous temporary requests, they ought to file a conditional use permit and allow that process to be reviewed through the city. Staff in its review ultimately approached the Planning Commission last March with a recommendation on this application. At that time, the Planning Commission indicated some concerns with the proposed use. They asked staff to go back and provide clarification on a number of the issues that were addressed within the staff report and the recommendation. Between that March meeting and the April meeting of the Planning Commission, the planning staff met at least twice with the applicant. It became obvious at the second meeting that the applicant's request was far more reaching than we had originally thought from looking at their application. What they had essentially requested was that during any time when skating was not going to be held on the site, that they be allowed the opportunity for special events, nightclub operations, and the sale of alcohol, specifically beer, in association with that. Staff attempted to draft, and we thought we had done successfully, a number of conditions in an attempt to try to deal with the very varied nature and somewhat confusing hours that the applicant had proposed, and presented that to the Planning Commission. However, when they reviewed it at their April meeting, they made it very clear in their deliberation, and certainly in their vote, that they felt the whole aspect of mixing alcohol sales in along with the special event activities was simply too confusing in a site that had historically been and traditionally been open to children. The conditions as proposed would have restricted ages at certain times. They felt that the hours and the activities as proposed by the applicant simply were too confusing, and they felt that the approach was not warranted at that site. The applicant appealed that decision on May 1st. We are before you tonight, as we often do. As a staff, we are indicating to you that we feel you should support the Planning Commission's denial. We think that they had some very valid points in considering the complications of the use. We believe that, given the state of the request as the applicant had put it, that it does begin to be very, very difficult to try to control it and oversee it from a staff standpoint. So we are recommending to you, as the city manager had indicated to you earlier, that you deny the request, uphold the Planning Commission's action of April 21st, and deny the request for the appeal. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have one question, Mr. Ludeke.
Yes.
It is interesting when you said that their particular C O P seemed to be a little bit more far-reaching in that any time that they weren't doing skating, that they would be allowed to do special events and alcohol. Now, was there a definite time for skating and that there would be always skating at that time in perpetuity? Or could they say, well, you know what? We're just not a skate rink anymore, and now we're just doing special events because it's not during the skating?
They seem to be very interested in taking any hours that weren't specifically devoted to skating. I think that they were trying to establish some consistent hours from day to day. But they indicated to us clearly that any time that that public skating was not available, that they wanted the opportunity to sell alcohol and to have other events, dancing, concerts that were associated with that dancing, that would be open to a more adult population.
So on this particular C O P, I mean, we'll just take it for a second. So on this particular CUP, I mean, just, we'll just take it for a sec of argument, they had, uh, every Friday night, they had skating between, you know, five o'clock and 10 o'clock. And then if one Friday they had a concert they wanted to do and they would just put up a sign and said, "No skating next Friday on the 10th," then they could serve alcohol on that night?
Based upon our oral conversation with them, that seemed to be the direction that they were leaning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any communications?
No communications except for what's in the front of your packet that you received when we posted.
Thank you.
I have seven speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor. I believe that first one is the applicant.
Uh, would the applicant want to go first or last of the speaker cards?
I'll go last.
Go last? Okay. Thank you.
Just so I didn't make a mistake, is the, is the applicant Olivia Marshall? You're the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's incorrect. So, the applicant is, Olivia Marshall is the property owner, but not the applicant.
Okay, so who's the applicant?
Staff, clarify that for us. Who's the applicant on the appeal? Sir, I'm talking to staff, please, if I could.
Well, Brian's looking at it. Did the other gentleman has a card in as well, too?
Yes.
Yes. But I'd like to just clear, I'd just like to be, find out who the applicant is.
The reason we need to know is because the applicant will, I, I don't have a time limit for the applicant. There's, there's a three-minute limit for everyone else.
Pedro Aravalo is listed as the applicant.
Vice Mayor Smith? The, the original applicant on the conditional use permit is Pedro Araveo.
Good.
And we don't have a card for him.
Did you want the applicant first, or?
No, the applicant can go last. I just need to know who the applicant is and I don't know that yet.
Olivia Marshall was the, was, is the property owner. But. Brian stated the applicant is Pedro and I don't, what's the last name, Brian?
Uh, Araveo. Okay, but we, pardon my, do we have a speaker card for the applicant?
You know, he had, uh, something written up, but, uh, apparently his translator, um, is not here and he doesn't feel like he can, uh, speak good enough English.
Okay. Okay, so.
Spanish reading.
So it's Mr. Uh.
Arevalo.
Okay.
Arevalo.
Yeah, this is somebody, I can't read this. This is like a, Arm of.
Okay, you're the one that's going to go last. Okay. All right. That's, that's how we'll do it. Yes, sir. And who are you?
My name is George Blumfield, 236 Shirley Lane, Palmdale. I've been an active participant in the, uh, roller skating, uh, programs up there at Holiday Rink for about 10 years. Uh, I think they're a very worthwhile thing. Uh, there's, uh, inline hockey, there's a newly inaugurated, uh, soccer program, there's a senior program that I'm involved in, was involved in the roller hockey program. Uh, it, it's all directed to very worthwhile health and fitness, uh, goals, I feel. Uh, the reason that I'm here on behalf of the, uh, the owners is because the, uh, the expenses incurred recently on, with regard to, uh, increased lighting, heating and air conditioning have forced multi-uses of the building. And as I understand it, to, to simplify it, it's, uh, the request is for, from one to four, it could be one, it could be two, it could be three or four events monthly that beer is sold, that those events would be completely disassociated with the skating program, which I feel is very worthwhile. It's, it's in the same context as the walk in the park that the city sponsors.
We don't serve alcohol in the walk with the, in the park.
But they serve at the fairgrounds and the cultural center. But anyway, uh, to keep it going, I think that it might be a valid argument for, from one to four events monthly to keep the skating programs going. That's why I'm here. I'm a non-paid employee. I'm an active participant, but I, I've never received any compensation. It's all voluntary to try to keep things going up there. But, uh, appreciate your, uh, chance to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Pillar? Who are you?
My name is John Pillar. I live at 2257 West Avenue, K-12 Lancaster, California.
No, we don't, just so everybody knows, you don't have to put your cellular address on the microphone.
Sorry.
I just want to be clear, you don't, you can if you want, but you don't have to.
Okay. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Holiday Skate Center also. Um, I'm a volunteer medic. I, uh, used to volunteer at, uh, LA County Raceway before, before we lost that. And, uh, unfortunately, two weeks after our raceway was closed, we had a fatal accident involving street racing. Um, I am an active part of the skating rink. I'm, I'm actually a floor guard. I also volunteer as a medic at the skating rink in case someone should fall and cut themselves or, you know, what have you. Um, the, uh, the, um, the owner, Ms. Uh, Ms. Marshall has been, has been very kind to me. Um, she actually opened a snack bar that, that I carry, uh, health products for the, for the kids, uh, sports supplements and waters and, and so on and so forth. And, um, in turn, I, I volunteered my services and, um, it's a wonderful place. My daughter is, uh, just graduated with honors from, uh, Amara Gose Creek Middle School and was looking for a place to hold a, um, an event for one of her, her clubs that she was in. And, uh, everywhere that we checked around town was either no, they're too young, or, you know, it was X amount of dollars that they couldn't come up with, et cetera, et cetera. The owner of the skating rink was, was kind enough to actually open the doors free of charge and allow my daughter and 30 of her classmates to actually use the rink and the skates and be able to have a party and, and, you know, enjoy themselves, excuse me, you know, for their last year of, of junior high school. And, um, I, I, I do, I do agree with, with the liquor license as far as, is the serving of the beer because, um, aside from, excuse me, aside from the roller skating, uh, they do have quinceañeras and wedding receptions and so on and so forth. Um, it is a fairly large building and as we all know, everything is, in, in our community and it, around the country is, is going up. Um, and I think anything that would benefit this, you know, benefit the rink as far as keeping their doors open would, would, would be wonderful. I can't see losing another establishment and taking our kids, giving them nowhere to go and having them roller skate on private property or skateboard on private property where they're, where they're subject to fines, subject to arrest for trespassing, subject to injury where they're, you know, where there's no one to help them. Whereas at the skating rink, there is somebody there that can, which would be me, that can assist in, assist them if they are injured and it gives them a place to go and somewhere that's structured and, and, um, and controlled. And when, again, when there is no skating involved, then I could, that, that's where I think they're asking for the, for the alcohol license for the beer and, and I'm actually for it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Guzman?
Uh, good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
I know there, we only have three minutes, but I do want to make a motion or actually ask a question, um, directly to the mayor, Mr. Paris.
You know how I get about that.
I don't know, first I'm in front of you, sir. Um, my understanding is that there may be a little conflict of interest with you, sir, being here. Uh, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that you have a law firm, Rex Paris Law Firm.
That's correct.
And that, uh, your client is suing the owner, Olivia Marshall, in the Holiday Skating Rink. And I do have a copy, certified copy of the, of the clerk.
If that's correct, I do have a conflict.
Absolutely. And too bad I wasn't the first one to be up here.
Okay. I'll recuse myself. Good. Thank you.
And we'll find out why that occurred without me knowing about it till now.
And I would like to know why Mr. Paris was here, uh, during the first three presentations without someone clearing that matter. And I'm sure we will. Because there's a lot of attorneys in this building and I'm not.
You know, let me, let me explain it to you.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I don't have a conflict, my client might. The, the conflict laws say that I have a conflict if I'm getting money from any, anybody involved in the, isn't that the gist of it? So, and allow me to apologize to you that, that I just remembered that. I, I do see your concern.
That there is a concern.
But to, to adopt an attitude about it, I'm, I'm, I'm recusing myself because I can see your concern. But you do not have any legal right whatsoever to have me recuse myself.
I understand, understand, sir. I'm not an attorney at all whatsoever, but I know there is.
And I, I would concur in that statement, that there is no legal conflict, but, uh, to avoid the appearance of any conflict, I think he's making the right decision to recuse himself.
Thank you.
But, but that does not mean that it's a legal conflict that would require his recusing himself.
And I will turn the meeting over to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you, because it was a concern for the applicant.
And you're Renee Guzman, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, um, here as, uh.
Go ahead, if we, if we can, please, uh, Madam Clerk, can you start the time over for him because I think that was just a concern that he brought up and we took care of it, so we'll listen to his, uh, his statement. Go ahead, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you, sir. Um, basically, uh, it's just facts. We're gonna go over, I'm gonna go over facts briefly, I know we have three minutes. Fact is that on March 9th of 2007, over 16 months ago, the applicant applied for a, uh, license through the ABC Department, State ABC. And the ABC Department conducted a detailed investigation, allowed a lot of time for planning, for law enforcement, for the community to protest. And during that investigation, nobody did. No one protested. The ABC Department made a detailed investigation and approved the liquor license. On March 9th of 2007, the applicant applied for a CUP and that's been over a year ago and we're still here before you trying to make a decision. Um, Planning Department and myself and Sheriff's Department, we had several, several meetings throughout the whole year. And during that time, uh, before we went to the planning commission, there was a staff report generated by planning. It was very interesting that in that staff report, Planning Department recommended approval of the CUP with imposed conditions. Now suddenly, when the planning commission, uh, denied their, their recommendation, they do a whole 360. A whole 360, now they're, um, in favor of the commission. Very interesting. Obviously, politics played a, a role. Um, on April 21st of 2008, the planning commission denied the planning staff report. Uh, during that time, uh, the commission was made of three people only and during that time, they indicated that they had a concern about the alcohol sales versus a place that has historically been known as a place for children. The issue with that is that there's clear hours of operation and Mr. Ludeke, um, incorrectly stated there was no clear operating hours. There's letters that I have here, I'm sure you have in your package, that clearly indicates that the request is to sell beer from 9:00 PM to midnight every day, when there's gonna be no skating at all whatsoever. Period. That's not very confusing to me and to other people. When there's skating, there's no alcohol. There's, period. Those are the conditions imposed. Also, uh, someone said it was a concern about law enforcement concern. As you know, the Sheriff's Department has, have provided a letter supporting the issues of the CUP with conditions imposed. And those conditions have been agreed by, by the applicant. In addition, over 500 signatures, and I do have them here, on a petition, has, have been, uh, received. The community is all for this. Uh, why did the Planning Department suddenly make a 360? Loyalty? Um, they don't want to go against the commission? I understand. I understand politics, sir. But the problem is that the community wants it, there's no law enforcement problem, and I challenge anyone in this room to bring a letter from a government agency, including ABC, indicating that this is a problem place with specifics, not concerns, but with facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Michael McCombs? Mr. Ludeke, if you could, while we get the speakers, Mr. Guzman said that, uh, uh, there was specific hours that the skating would be and it would be, the alcohol would be served at a different time. Can you, is that, is that true? I mean, is that in the, uh, looking at the CUP here, maybe you can show me on what page it talks about the sale of alcohol, what times, on the conditions?
Vice, Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes, sir.
If you would look at the first paragraph on page four of the April 21st, 2008 staff report to the planning commission, that is the paragraph that outlined what the applicant's requested hours of operation and various uses were, uh, as we understood it. That was the information that was in front of the planning commission on the night of April 21st.
Okay, that background information, that would be included in the conditions? I mean, what are the hours of operation, when the sale of alcohol, would that be on, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, that would be page, um, starting with page one where it says attachment to the PC Resolution 085, uh, other conditions? Or would it be someplace else within the CUP?
Essentially, what the applicant had requested was that there be no alcohol sales during the time that, that the, the site was open for public skating. But if you look at the way in which they wanted the, the hours of operation categorized, looking at that paragraph out of the staff report, they indicated that the hours of operation of the facility in general would be from 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the morning, seven days a week. And they wanted the sale of alcohol limited from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. They did not intend to sell alcohol during any of that stretch of time during the time that public skating was available. However, because they indicated to us that they tended to want to be able to rent the facility for weddings, quinceañeras, uh, other types of events, they didn't want to restrict the ability of themselves to be able to sell alcohol during those times when they would close for public skating but have that event. Uh, at the same time, they also indicated, uh, that any time that there was going to be, um, uh, you know, nightclub-type entertainment, uh, and I think the last paragraph kind, or last sentence kind of calls this out, the applicant proposes to have nightclub entertainment after 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Friday to Sunday, and various times when skating is not ongoing. They essentially wanted the ability to be able to sell alcohol and have other kinds of events at any time that they weren't open for public skating.
Right.
And, and I'll tell you, in staff looking at that, and certainly the planning commission looking at that, that tended to leave it very flexible.
Well, I just, I mean, I just want to clear that up because that last speaker, if that's okay with the council, uh, Mr. McEwen, I, I think I, the way I understand the CUP is that the technicalities of the language on there, uh, if it had it on there that they could serve it whenever the skating was not occurring, would allow them to stop the skating on a particular day and then serve alcohol. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions, uh, on those issues, brought up, council? Okay, uh, Mr. McCombs?
Can I get one clarification?
Yes, sir.
What are the actual requested hours to skate and the actual requested hours to serve alcohol as the appeal currently sits?
Mr. Guzman has indicated some kind of a different hour schedule, I think, in his oral testimony. From staff standpoint, their request remains as we understood it on the, from the April 21st meeting.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. McCombs?
Good evening, my name is Michael McCombs. I'm here representing the Holiday Skating Rink as, uh, just as a participant and, uh, somebody, you know, plan to bring my family there as well. I've, uh, grown up there. I have been there since I've been growing, you know, nine years old and, uh, you know, when the hockey was affiliated with the, with the rink itself, I also joined those programs and various, uh, skating programs on the weekends, which, uh, you know, in my personal opinion, I've had no, uh, criminal backgrounds, anything like that. It did keep me, you know, off the streets and it allowed me for a place to go as far as, uh, to be able to have fun, have a great time and not have to worry about, uh, you know, where I was gonna hang out and what I was gonna do with my friends and things like that. Um, now I'm a father of two, you know, I plan on, uh, continuously bringing my family there, you know, to skate and do various, uh, events and things like that. Um, what they're asking for just, you know, I think helps, you know, an economy standpoint to keep the doors open for the skating sessions for, you know, again, for us a place to go during the day. Uh, there's been multiple, you know, multiple birthday parties, things like that, that have been put on there during the day. And I just think it's a great, you know, great place to go as, you know, everything closing down. Um, there's actually a rink right up the street, the, uh, Grexy Center, that, um, didn't survive. The business is, you know, so to speak, and Holiday's been around for, for years. And I think it's an establishment that does allow, uh, you know, people of my age and, and for the future, to allow us to go somewhere and, and have a great time and be in a safe environment. Um, and just enables us to, to do those types of activities and just have a great time in general. And, uh, I hope that, you know, you would take that in consideration and, uh, for the re- take that in consideration and further request, and help them out as best as I can, so that way we can keep the facilities open and not go, you know, under like many businesses in that have before.
Thank you, Mr. McCombs. Randy Browning? Randy Browning. And the next person's going to be, if you're on deck there, Julieta Amarosa, I think it is. I can't read the writing. Go ahead, Mr. Browning.
Hello, Mr. Smith. I'm here for the Holiday Skating Rink. I actually started skating there since I was about five years old. I skated there all the way till now. I still skate there. I started playing roller hockey there at 13, all the way up to about 19 or so, when they stopped in the Gretzky Center, when they opened, they ended up stopping roller hockey because they couldn't compete. Then I joined the U.S. Navy, and I was in the Navy for my term, and then I came back, and I started working for them again, and I started running a roller hockey league there. And we also started teaching children on Sunday mornings, how to, me and Mike McCombs, who was actually just up here, taught kids how to skate and play hockey. I know for a fact that there are people that I grew up with in the neighborhood I grew up in, I would not be where I am today if it wasn't for the Holiday Skating Rink. I would be in trouble, no doubt about it. If there wasn't for the skating rink or hockey, I would definitely be in trouble, guarantee it. And I'm basically here to support them. Main reason I'm here to support them is that I believe that what they're trying to do is good. When they run quinceañeras out there, I've been there many times when they're doing it, the problem is if they can't regulate the alcohol, people can bring alcohol in themselves, so you're not really stopping them from bringing any alcohol in there during those times. So when they rent the rink out to people running quinceañeras, it makes it very hard for them to regulate children having alcohol, underage drinkers. If they can't serve the alcohol, it's very hard to be able to regulate. Now, if they can't, I don't think the big issue or concern is mainly that they're trying to get money, or something like that, to help to keep the rink open. But my main concern is, when they're running these quinceañeras or parties, if they can't serve it, they can't regulate it. And if they could serve it, actually ID people, stuff like that during these times, then you're also stopping underage drinkers from drinking at these parties. That's a big concern. Also, I believe they had another concern, something to do with parking. The whole time I've ever been there, I've never had a concern with parking. I've been there three, four days a week. I've never been there where parking was a concern during these parties. Thank you.
I give 30 seconds. Probably 28.
Oh.
27.
All right. The place definitely molded who I am, and I appreciate it a lot, and I really believe that it could still do that for other young kids, and they need a place to go, need a place to hang out, and they definitely need to be safe, and the rink still needs a reason to be open. They need to be able to control the alcohol if it is there.
Now your time, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludiki, a quick question. On the permits that were given out over the past period of time that we're talking about, and he's talking about the parties that were there, that people brought in alcohol, did they have permits to have the alcohol? Because I know we give out alcohol licenses for that.
The only authorized alcohol permits that I'm aware of, from ABC, were for temporary one-day events. They tended to be concerts. I also take a little bit of an issue with the comment that they have no way to regulate people bringing in alcohol. I think they have every right to regulate people bringing in alcohol. The indication to us, however, was, if you look back at the original staff report in March, where we assumed that the, or understood that the only request they were making was to have these kinds of events, the quinceañera's, birthday parties, none of the nightclub or other types of things. The statement made to us on more than one occasion by the applicant was that they did not sell enough alcohol at those to make it worthwhile, and that was a major concern in terms of their revenue. That's the reason that they requested the nightclub and other operations to go beyond that.
So if they rent it out to a private party, like a wedding party, that doesn't necessarily give them the right to bring in, the wedding party to bring in alcohol and have drinking unless it was permitted?
I believe they can regulate that on their own premises.
Right, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Ludiki, on that, Senator? Julieta Amarosa, I think it is? Okay, we'll skip that one. Olivia Marshall?
Good evening, City Council. I have requested, since the last time that you denied us, I have requested to meet with you, almost in a daily basis, so I could explain our program and show you what we have. The skating rink has been for 28 years serving the community, and we are in trouble. I've tried to tell the Planning Department, we need your help. You have to, the only way that we're going to keep our doors open is if you grant us a CUP. You say crime, you want to keep crime down, so do I. I'm the first one. We have security, we have two securities for every hundred, and if we see any problems, we have three, four, five securities. We have not, there's a cooper that can tell you, how many problems have we had? How many times have we called them in a quinceañera? None. In a concert? None. In a events? One time, and we explained that you don't know the problems that these people have. If they have, they're troubled, and they call a 911, of course they're going to respond. That's what they're for. They came, there was no problem, but it was that kid that had a problem, and he thought that he was going to get jumped, or shot, or whatever. But that's the only time since I've been running that place, the only time that we've had any problems. But right now, we have the biggest problem, and that is that our doors are going to close. Where are our kids going to go to? I live in Las Vegas. My kids have a nice place over there, but you don't. And I'm trying really hard to keep the doors open for these kids, whether they're black, Hispanic. The Hispanic people are crying for us to have our concerts. They want to have them there. They want to have events there, but what can we do? Because you're holding us back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. So any speakers? I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll open it up for discussion for the council, or any questions to staff.
The applicant?
I'm sorry, I closed the public hearing, sir, so, public hearing's closed. That's the applicant? Okay, I thought, yeah, well, Mr. Lud, one of you said he wasn't going to talk, so, okay, so I'll reopen the public hearing for that purpose only. Go ahead.
Is it okay if I, if I?
If you want to translate for him, that's fine. Just go ahead and fill out a speaker's card for him when you're done, Mr. Guzman. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Pedro Revalo. I'm sorry, my English is not too much. I need a, maybe a Mr. Rene Guzman read for me this letter. Thank you.
And then one of the letters that he, one of the sections that he wanted me to emphasize was, the staff report completed by Mr. Brian Ludiki, the Planning Director, dated 6/24/08. There just seems to be a lot of questions about standard hours, are there standing standard hours or not. I think this is going to really clear it up, and I'm going to read quote from the staff report. And in the staff report, on the first page, I take that back, on the second page, third paragraph, and I quote, "On May 1, 2008, the applicant appealed the Planning Commission decision to the City Council. In response to the Planning Commission decision, the applicant has offered to make changes to the proposed operation by limiting the alcohol sales to evenings after 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Saturday, and during private banquets, as indicated in the attached letter dated May 12, 2008." And that's the letter that the applicant completed, where it clearly indicates that the intent and the request is for sales of beer from 9:00 p.m. to midnight only. Same staff report, sixth paragraph, and I quote again, "In response to the Commission's concerns, the applicant offered to change the hours of operation for the scheduled events, and to define hours when the facility will be used as a nightclub. The proposed hours of operation for the nightclub will be held Sunday through Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Skating events will be scheduled during the days, during the day prior to 9:00 p.m., and private banquet will continue on a case-by-case basis. No beer will be sold during any skating event." That's a direct quote from the staff report, and everyone has a copy of that. It's very clear to the applicant and to us, our intention, and they could place that condition, and they'll sign it in a heartbeat. You could put that condition and very clearly state that beer sales, beer sales and consumption will only occur from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. during normal operating hours, each seven days a week, when there's skating. Anything after, prior to 9:00 p.m., there's no alcohol. So that way, you can't mix it up. You can't mix up the uses, and there's no issues about if this use is conforms to this use, or is it separate, or can they skate, and then suddenly put a sign and say, well, there's no skating today because we feel like selling beer. That would not be a problem, because it's clearly indicated here what the intention is. Yeah, and his focus is to get adults from 9:00 to 12:00. That's the intention, to get adults. It appears, he's telling me that he gets a lot of adults that like to go there and dance. A lot of senior citizens also that go there and like to dance, and they're all adults. They will be controlled. I was looking at the conditions. Not only did the ABC Department place 14 conditions, the CUP has a ton of conditions. And like I said, I think there was, there's always a question about the hours. I think if we made it very clear on the condition, and the way the staff report is written by planning of the intention from 9:00 to 2:00 a.m., then there's no debate, and there shouldn't be any issues. There's never been a law enforcement issue. I heard that's a law enforcement issue, but unfortunately, I still haven't seen a piece of paperwork documents that. And I hear the word concerns and concerns, and he told me, here's the word concerns and concerns. What are they? They're not facts. When I talked to you, they were directly facts. There's no concerns. Anyone can have a concern for any place that sells alcohol. There's always going to be a concern, but you mitigate those concerns with conditions. That's why there's a CUP with conditions. You mitigate it with conditions, and we limit the hours, strict hours, 9:00 to 12:00, three hours a day. That's all. It's been 20 months, 20 months of discussions with the Planning Director, with planning, with Police Department, with the community, with the Planning Commission, and it's, he says, it's amazing to him that there's still nothing clear as to what the intent is. Granted, granted, before, when he originally applied for the CUP, the hours were very clear. And as a matter of fact, I had a lot of discussions with, with the owner, and said, you need to be clear and specific, and there were some issues. That's why we had multiple, multiple meetings. As soon as we made the appeal, and I have the paperwork on the appeal, which is the appeal form, which he signed, it's very clear in the appeal form, and the appeal form, it says that they were requesting the permit to allow the existing skating rink to be used as a banquet hall, and allow for the sale of beer at specific times, and it was placed in both specific times. There's a reason why that, that appeal form had that word, specific times. If not, we could have, we could have played with the hours.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Guzman, then, when you said it's going to be open for events, read that again, that line again?
Is that the one from the staff report, sir?
No, the one that you just read, about you want to-
Permit to allow the existing skating rink to be used as a banquet hall-
Okay, so during the banquet hall times, would you have a sale of beer?
Yes.
Well, then that doesn't, then you're only going to, then that means you would only have the banquet hall rented from 9:00 p.m. till midnight? Haven't seen, is that what you're saying?
No, sir. On the conditions, and that's something that was cleared, and it's on the staff report, too, the hours of operation, normal hours of-
I'm going to talk about the operation of the night. Well, I think we all understand that you said that you want to sell beer openly as like a bar or a nightclub-type place from 9:00 to 12:00.
Correct.
What I'm saying is that when you rent out the facility, you also want to sell alcohol, but that's been the question that staff has supported, is that those times are variable. In other words, you could have, you could close down skating for the day if somebody came and said, I want to run it for a wedding. And then you just stated now that you would want to sell alcohol during that time. So that's what's the flexibility, okay? It's not, unless you could show me someplace different in there, and I think counsel would say the same thing, that's, I don't see the hours restricted for your catering.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith, if I could jump in here. I actually, the first time that they came before the Planning Commission, I was sitting as the chairman, and you can see the confusion that can be intertwined here, and it actually went beyond what we've already heard tonight, and I'd rather not go back and elaborate, but it was so confusing to not only myself, but my fellow Planning Commissioners, that we actually recommended to continue it, allow them to go back, because we were just, every time we were speaking to somebody differently, or we asked a different question, we would get a different answer. And so, out of my recommendation, we asked for it to be continued for 30 days, and to allow the applicant to go back and get some clarity. So yes, there is some greater clarity today in the appeal, which I'll admit, didn't exist. Now, I was not present on the night that the Planning Commission met, and, you know, they continued the public hearing. There was only three there that night, and I believe it was Commissioner Troth that was sitting in my place, Vice Chairman. You can see, you can see the confusion, and I think that it was the, if I can reiterate, it was the Commission's concern of the conflict that could immediately be intertwined or thrown in. We even got testimony that if there was a quinceañera, I'm not quite for sure if I'm pronouncing it correct, is that there would be potentially maybe skating, and they were suggesting just separating the floor with cones. So on one end, you might have adults drinking alcohol, and then the younger children there skating at the same time and separating the floor just between cones, and we were quite concerned possibly with the interjection of alcohol, skating, and children. We just didn't see that as a good mix. So I know that some of those things were brought up. I don't think it's in this report, but I definitely remember in taking public testimony, so. So I already get a sense there's some confusion on your part.
Well, no, after he read, thank you, Councilman Mann, for that, that information. You know, I think since he read his application, I think it's very clear exactly what the, you know, Mr. Guzman, I have no, I, we're not into the discussion yet, but since we're talking about it, and you're the last one, I have, I have no confusion under what your intent is. I know exactly what your intent is. Your intent is to have some skating and a specific time for alcohol, and to rent that place out as much as you can, and sell alcohol, and make some money at the same time. And the flexibility within the CUP legally gives you the opportunity, I mean, you could virtually, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, you could virtually shut down skating for a month and say, we're running it out every afternoon. And I don't see, I don't see any restrictions, including in your own words, or the applicant's own words, in your application. So, I mean, I don't want to get any more further. I have some other comments, but, you know, I'll give you, you know-
If I make this on that-
You can have a rejoinder there if you'd like.
Yeah, I talked to him, and I remember him mentioning that to me, that the banquet events, the banquet halls, because their birthday party quinceañeras are only Saturdays, Sundays. It's not every day.
It's only Saturday.
I'm sorry, Saturday, only Saturdays.
Yeah, I know, but that doesn't say it in the CUP or in the application. That's the difference.
I guess we, I guess that the request is, can they, they could put a condition to that effect, and they'll sign it.
Is there anything else that you'd like to add? Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
His last statement was that, you know, that just take everything into consideration and that, you know, this, this thing continue on for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen months, thousands of dollars in time has been invested and that, you know, it'd be a shame if all this gets denied because there, there can't be some agreement or, or communication or conditions imposed.
Thank you. If you could please stay, Councilman, so we have some questions for you.
I've not seen it in the staff report. What are your current hours of operation for skating? How many hours a week is, is the facility open for skating?
One to four, six to nine, every, toda la semana. One to four and six to nine, Friday, Saturday and Sundays. No, 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 every week, no every Saturdays have quinceañeras. It's only one quinceañera or two quinceañeras a month. When no have quinceañera and I put a regular skating through the weekends.
What are some, what are some of those?
One, four, six to nine.
All the days?
All the days.
Yeah, I wanted to clear that out because he translated incorrectly. His hours of operation for skating are one through four and six to nine every day.
Seven days a week?
Every day. With the exception.
Of the occasion of quinceañera or?
Right, exactly.
In absence of any special events?
In absence of any special events, correct. His, his normal hours are one to four and six to nine, every day.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant from the council? Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing now and we'll open it for discussion amongst the council.
I'd like to jump in here first. As sympathetic I am to someone running a business because I think my background with just being involved with the Chamber of Commerce, which is probably a foremost leader in the community when it comes to specifically small business. There's a concern that I have on my part to make sure that a business is viable and, and flourishes. Unfortunately, between someone coming up and asking for a C U P that effectively allows them to switch gears from a nightclub to a skating rink to holding private banquets and then even as far as concerts, that's where my, when someone says, yeah, yes, I do have a concern. Maybe what should be done is the consideration, is there enough business to support nightclubs, private banquets or concerts or, or vice versa? I, myself, I, my wife is involved in a business and it would be no more different than her coming back in and asking for a modified C U P and, and on the days that were the slowest, we'll convert the business to a bingo parlor. And I, I don't have a problem giving someone a C U P, but, but I think there needs to be clarity here and, and I think as what you already established, Vice Mayor Smith, is, is that it could be fairly easily changed on a moment's notice. And my biggest concern is where we interject alcohol with young people and definitely skating. I mean, that's my biggest problem. And I don't have a problem giving them a, a C U P for a specific use, but unfortunately that they want four different types of uses and at their discretion. And I, I don't know if we could have a, a C U P that would make me comfortable enough that would support those four different types of uses on their demand. So that's just my, my thoughts and my concerns.
Any other council members want to make a comment?
I also have concerns about the hours of operation where, in which alcohol could be sold. I think the request is, is pretty far reaching in terms of the hours that could be as, as council member, Vice Mayor Smith has, has outlined so well. Obviously, the concern is, can we do enough of a business other than skating, the primary use of the business to, for the business to remain financially viable? I don't know. I'm concerned that a previous resolution that was considered by the planning commission said, "The proposed use will not adversely affect nearby residents and facilities devoted to use by children, families and the general public because the banquet hall is located at and gives the address and the surrounding uses." It's funny that we're concerned about uses surrounding the rink when the rink itself is a facility that's used by children and family and the general public. And as Councilman Mann said, trying to mix those two, I, I just don't think it sets a good precedent. I think either the skating rink stands on its own two feet or it doesn't. I don't think mixing in the sale of alcohol is, is a precedent we want to set for this type of use. Can they still make a financial go at it by having quinceañeras and whatnot? I don't think that's currently prohibited. So I, I'm leaning against supporting the application unless I hear something otherwise.
Councilwoman Marcus?
I have the same concerns that have been voiced, I believe. I can't. I'd have to uphold what staff has recommended.
I'll finish up on the comments before we hear any motions. One is I'd like, I want to go over a few points here. I took notes while the speakers are going, I just want to clear the air on a number of things. One is Marshall, you said that you made comments or a request to speak to us almost on a daily basis. One is you under, you have to understand that you're in the same boat as everybody else that has an appeal. An appeal, we sit here like a quasi judicial body and we're going to hear something. We're not, we're not going to meet with the witnesses and everything ahead of time. We're going to hear your testimony as your testimony. So it's my standard procedure that I don't meet with any appeals and we just had an appeal, I think the last time, on an electronic sale. And I had a request to meet with them and I didn't meet with them also. Also, Mr. Guzman, you said that A B C approved your alcohol license, but we didn't. We're not governed by the state of California, what the A B C does on our conditional use permits, on how we allow businesses and what we allow. You could get a license to do something from the state, but that doesn't mean, you know, work, it doesn't fit within our planning of what, what we want our city to be like. You know, finally, I think all of us up here look at everything. I think everything that we look at, almost virtually, every decision we make is the balance of the individual rights and you as a business owner that want to keep your business going and make money and the balance of what's good for the community. And even though you have a, an argument that the skating and the youth stuff is, is viable and is good for the community, we have to balance that with, you know, what's the outcome? Now, my experience, I actually worked as a deputy sheriff and on the side jobs, I worked at some of these different types of events. Sometimes people would hire us for security. I know exactly what goes on at these places and how easily it gets out of control. And, but the most, the, the one thing that concerns me more than anything else, and I think everybody's said this too, is the flexibility of the legalities of this C U P, even in your own words. And what I've learned years ago is that what you said now, even though you might in good faith say, well, we're only going to serve alcohol at this time, once that C U P's in place, somebody else could come in and they could say, you know what, I'm running, I'm running out this place every single afternoon for something. Can't have that flexibility. So I just, I think I, I support what the planning commission's recommendation was and, so I'll, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain any motions.
I move that we adopt resolution oh eight five six, upholding the planning commission's decision to deny the conditional use permit oh seven oh nine.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. So the vote is four zero zero with Mayor Paris recusing himself. I'll go get it and hand it back to them. So we're now on. Continue joint business.
Okay, J C P one, a staff report regarding the budget from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Paris and city council members. Before you tonight is consideration of the adoption of the budget. As you recall, we've had a workshop for council that was open to the public. We had a public hearing last council meeting and now before you again is the adoption. Not to reiterate the presentation that's been given twice, but the budget does maintain service levels during an economic downturn through continuing conservative financial practices. It significantly increases the city's commitment to public safety. It deals with a lot of our critical issues, including water resource management. We've identified areas to look at over the next few years to make sure we stay financially viable and it has a capital improvement program that's specifically targeted to needs of the community. During the discussions, we also heard what the council said and tried to incorporate that. There was a discussion on section eight, which you will see obviously on your agenda tonight and a couple of items will be a consideration that was placed on your agenda. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I, I think there was one, one program that we wanted to mention also. I think it's within the budget that we set aside as certain appropriations for our auditing of business license, specifically for compliance on all aspects, but also on the use of illegal aliens in the local businesses.
That's correct. There is funds set aside for that. We are currently working to secure an audit firm should the council approve the budget.
You know, while we're on that subject, I'm getting a lot of emails about undocumented workers at various locations and, and there seems to be a concern developing about how we deal with undocumented workers. And the concern I ha, the concern I have as the mayor of the city is that certain citizens think that it's perfectly appropriate to harass people they believe are undocumented workers. And Captain Anderson, I, I would like, I would like to be absolutely certain that you understand our position, that we are going to do something in regards to employers that make it a habit of hiring undocumented workers. But we are not, we are not tolerating in any way the harassment of these people because other people think, suspect them of being undocumented. And I would hope that we are engaged in maximum enforcement of protecting these people's rights from being harassed. And it would be a serious mistake for anyone to think that it is somehow open season on anybody in this community. We, we intend to, to do something about the undocumented worker problem. We, we will absolutely address that in, by, by dealing with the employers who hire them. But that does not mean that we should be harassing anyone. And I'm sure that I'm speaking for all of us when I say that. And as far as law enforcement is concerned, they should absolutely understand that that is our intent. I, I want these people protected.
I can speak for the city. Clearly, we're not doing that. And my understanding, and Axel can speak for himself, but the policies of the sheriff's department specifically protect those rights.
Thank you. Okay.
There's no speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Mr. McEwen, can I, can, can we make a motion and adopt all these as a?
You need two separate motions, one for the agency and one for the city council.
So, so I'll move that we adopt a resolution number zero four dash zero eight through zero six, zero eight for the agency.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous?
I'll now move that we adopt for the city council, a resolution number zero eight dash fifty seven through zero eight dash sixty two.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Thank you. And once again, I'd like to say just, just great job and an amazing budget. Just really, just a really good job.
I'm confused here. Okay.
Those are the resolutions that we just passed.
I see, okay. Thank you. Okay, let's go to new business. And we have a, a staff report regarding fundraising strategies from the finance director.
I don't know if it's fundraising strategy, if it's a funding strategy.
Funding strategy.
But I'm all for fundraising.
If anyone has their checkbook.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have to make this meeting earlier. I'm just joking, just joking.
The new city council breakfast meeting.
The item currently before you is to approve the funding strategy for the Amargosa Creek drainage undergrounding project. Amargosa Creek drainage channel runs from Ted Street West, south to Avenue L., crossing several properties. And it's depicted on the slide with the yellow dash, the yellow dashes. The properties are projected for development as the auto dealers expansion to the north, commercial development as you move south, and then a hospital development. At its August fourteenth, two thousand and seven regular council meeting, the city council approved a development agreement with L. Street Properties LLC for reimbursement of funding for the commercial portion. Under the terms of the agreement, the city is to pre-fund the project, making the properties ready for development with reimbursement to occur for the commercial section when the commercial parcels are sold or within ten years. The proposed budget adjustments result in drainage impact fees being made available to fund the construction portion of the project. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Any communications?
No communications.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move that we adopt the funding strategy as outlined in the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's one abstention from Mayor Paris and the four in favor of it. Okay, now we come to the council agenda. And that's me, isn't it? The, the first item is the section eight ad hoc committee and Councilwoman Marcus, where are we on that?
Do we, do we hear speakers first? Do we have any?
No, I think we're just reporting now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have two, it looked like we had two speakers that wanted to speak on section eight.
Okay, who are they? Let me see those.
With this particular one.
It's Barbara Mizels. Is that right? Okay. And Sharla Brebeck, is that right? Would you like to speak now or would you like to wait for us to do the report and have you speak? I'll leave it up to you.
Go now.
Okay. Okay. Come on up.
Okay, I'm the biggest chicken you ever want to see.
Okay.
This is my first time in front of a city council and the mayor. But this is something. Yes, we have met.
Okay.
I live at Cedar Creek.
That's right, I remember here now.
This is something that's very important to me and I have dealt with this for a while, but I'm just here to start off. There lives a woman in the community, a woman who, on a daily basis, stretches out her hand to the poor and the needy. When she speaks, she speaks with wisdom, the law of kindness and compassion. Some call her a neighbor, some call her friends, some call her children, or some say her children are blessed. There are three brothers, one who's chosen to walk upright and work righteousness and speaks truth from his heart. He does not slander or do evil to his neighbor. His church has anointed him to be a deacon. The second brother has lived his life in service. The second brother has lived his life in service to his community with courage and fairness. He now is finding the courage to face an illness so many inflicted must pull to courage to survive, one day at a time. Then he will find the courage to share personal hope with others. The other is the mayor. Okay. Law is enforced by both state of California and the federal government, so mandated. It is illegal for city, counties, or local government, or agencies working on their behalf to make zoning, or land, or use of policies that unlawfully discriminate against a citizen, such as refusal to rent, lease, or sell a house. Creating property documents, such as deeds, NCC, and Rs., that contain restrictive provisions limiting sale, rentals, or use. Failure to provide reasonable accommodations in rules, policies, practices. Oh, I'm a slow reader, I'm sorry. The Housing Fair Housing Act, the Act of Civil Rights of nineteen sixty-four, section five oh five rehabilitation of nineteen seventy-three, Age Discrimination Act nineteen seventy-five, housing vouchers, and section eight. The housing voucher is a federal government major program assisting low-income families. I'm sorry, I'm not done, but you have, I have, you have a copy.
Thank you. Mrs. Brebeck? Oh, you were Mrs. Brebeck. We were Mizels. Okay, okay.
Whoops, sorry about that answer. Mayor, city council. Councilwoman Mann, my gratitude. The confusion of the voucher program has led to a crusade against the citizens who are least able to take the full advantage of the rights offered by the federal government to be unprotected from unscrupulous rulemaking by those who wish to legislate or intimidate those protected by mandated federal law. The rules and regulations generally under Title forty-two are as follows. The chapter has purpose of enabling poor and elderly persons to take full advantage of housing assistance offered by the federal government, so mandated. The rights pre-earned under the National Housing Acts are not civil rights within thirteen forty-three of the Title twenty-eight. Benefits like those provided under this chapter are a matter of statutory entitlement for persons qualified to receive them, and those persons must receive due process. The due process benefits are such as those provided under the Housing Act are a matter of statutory entitlement for persons qualified to receive them. Executive Order one two eight nine two by the President of the United States, George Bush, reads, "Leadership and coordination of fair housing in federal programs affirmatively further in fair housing by the authority vested in me as President by the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and in accordance with the Fair Housing Act as amended, forty-two U.S. thirty-six oh one at sequel act. In order to affirmatively further fair housing and urban development, the route the United States is hereby ordered as follows, section five. What it says in section five for you to read, it says, 'Any executive agency concludes that any person or entity, including any state or local public agency, applying for or participating in or supervised or regulated under a program or activity relating to housing and urban develop, has not complied with this order.' Here's what happens. A cancellation or termination of agreements or contracts with such person, entity, or state or local public agency. B, refusal to extend any further aid under any program or activity administered by it and affected by this order. C, refusal to grant supervisory regulatory approval to such person, entity, or state.' But I'm gonna finish. Under any program, each decision to invoke sanctions and the reason thereof shall be documented and brought before the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development and where appropriate to the Attorney General in a timely manner. Discrimination is a form of an abomination and beneath the integrity of those who have a fiduciary duty for to take all citizens. The crusade to dictate to owners of dwellings who have can rent, or face local fines, or face the municipal, wheeled out by the City of Lancaster. I will help those with me seek any legal recourse as administered by law. Thank you.
Thank you. The fight's on.
I got two hearing aids.
And I left mine at home today.
Bet you can read babies.
I can read.
That's personal. Mother's wonderful.
Well, thank you. I agree with you. I think she is too. And, and you know, let's, you know, let's be clear about this. We will not do anything to, in any way, set any obstacle for section eight housing for seniors, or section eight housing for the disabled. I think that that is the reason that program should exist.
Working mothers also.
And, and let me, let me finish. Let me finish.
Two children. She's honest and hardworking.
Let me finish.
Okay.
There's a, we have to, and we're not going to do anything about law-abiding section eight people who, who are, contribute to their neighborhood and are a vital part of their neighborhood. That's not what we're concerned about. But if any of you wanna know the extent of this section eight problem, the Atlantic Monthly, I was coming back from New York a couple days ago, and I read this article about section eight in the Atlantic Monthly that was truly eye-opening, how it developed and what it's done to suburbs throughout this nation. And you think we have problems now? Just wait. Just wait to what other communities are experiencing.
You're taking into account...
Let me, I'm not taking, wait a minute. No, you're not allowed to do, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hey, hey, wait a minute. Do you, do you think because you're a senior, you get to come in here and break the rules? You don't. You don't. If you wanna come back up to the podium, you can ask, and we will allow, we may allow you to do that, but we will not take it from the floor.
May I?
I gave you your turn to talk. No, you gotta give me my turn to talk, and then I'll let you come back. How's that?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. And we can disagree with this, but I'm, I wanna be clear to the landlords in this community. We are going to do maximum enforcement in regards to section eight. We are not going to surrender our community to what's happening. And it is happening throughout the nation. And what, what's going on is that they take section eight vouchers, they encourage people to move to the suburbs, and they don't bring one iota of service with them. The services these people need stay in Los Angeles. And so what do they get to do when they do that? We see hospitals start to close down because, quite honestly, they don't need them anymore. We see all types of services that the counties no longer have to pay for because they've simply moved the problem out. Right now, and section eight is contributing to it in a major fashion, the Antelope Valley has the highest death rate from renal failure, from cancer, from, from heart disease, and the list goes on and on and on. It wasn't that way five, ten years ago. It is absolutely killing our citizens. And it's not just the poor, it's all of us. You know, God forbid we have a heart attack when the, when the emergency room is busy because there is a substantial probability we're gonna die on that waiting room floor. That is what's happening in our hospitals today. And it's all because the county of Los Angeles and the state of California has not transferred those vital services that low-income people need when they moved them out with section eight. It's a horrible problem. But no, we're not going to surrender this community to it. We're going to only accept our fair share. And that's all we're saying. We do not want any more section eight than our fair share because we've reached a tipping point. The tipping point where we're no longer able to provide vital services to people. That's intolerable. It's absolutely intolerable. And one of the reasons they're able to get away with it is because they point to the seniors and they point to the disabled, and they say to every city council and to every mayor across America, how dare you say anything that might in, in any way hurt the disabled and the seniors? I, I think that you know from my mother that I would never, ever do anything to in any way hurt the seniors or the disabled in this community. In fact, what Lancaster is doing for the seniors with Scott Erlich on Lancaster Boulevard and over at the Essex Center, in a very short period of time, we are going to be the nation's model for how to house seniors. Where you're living now, you're probably gonna move because what he's building is truly magnificent. I mean, not just better, I mean magnificent. The, the opportunities that are going to be afforded to seniors in this new housing that's coming to Lancaster is fantastic. I, I can't, I don't have enough adjectives to, to say how wonderful it is. And it's because of this city staff that that's happening. But there is a monster that comes with section eight, and it is destroying neighborhoods. And that is what we need to attack. And I have every intention of doing that. And nothing will stop us. If, if there's a landlord here that is, is abusing the section eight voucher system and not being responsible to their neighbors, they're going to be, they're going to be seeing fines they've never dreamed of before. It will be our intent to put liens on their property for the city services that they're robbing us of, and it will be our intent to confiscate those homes if possible. And, and I have two council members here, a council member Smith and council member Marcus, that have been incredibly creative in just the last two weeks and coming up with some plans to do precisely that. And it really has become a matter of saving our neighborhoods, and that's what we're going to do. And if that offends anybody's sensibilities, I can live with that. But it will not do anything to hurt you and the others like you. In fact, I can honestly say that Lancaster is going to be the model for how to treat our seniors and how to, to help expand the contributions seniors are able to make. I, I, I'm just really excited about it. I toured it today. Now, if you'd like to come up to the podium, I'd like to hear from you, but you only get three minutes. We all gotta follow the rules.
I'm out of breath before I even get here. What it is is very simple. There's a portability program. LA no longer can give out vouchers because they've caught doing dirty. What you could have done all this time is work with the supervisor of the, Michael Antonovich and have it where only those living in the community would be able to get the vouchers available through the county within the community of Antelope Valley. That you could have done.
That's right, and that is something we're working on. But I've only been elected sixty days.
Now I'm speaking.
I'm, you're right.
Instead attacking all of us, because what are you gonna do with the veterans that come back that are disabled? What are you gonna do with the mentally retarded? You want us now because we're elderly, because we're on section eight? Do not go to the hospital? God forbid somebody else needs it? I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way. Mandated by law, and you're an attorney and you know it, I have rights under federal law, what is mandated. Had you asked me, I would have gone to the supervisor and said, let us not take any portability. And I'm a portability person. I couldn't stand the gangbangers. I couldn't stand being threatened. I couldn't stand seeing my neighbors gone after with a knife from some Chicano. And you talk about life in Lancaster? Of course it's better. Why wouldn't anybody wanna live here? We're protected under the law and have been up to now. But I'll see ya and raise you one.
Okay, but we, we really have to listen to each other if we're going to come to some agreement. I, I understand your position and I appreciate it.
You don't supervise a man.
No, 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 you can't do it from the floor.
For a minute and three seconds.
Yeah, but you gotta do it from the left.
Supervisor man rented. He found decent people to rent. It is up to the landlord not to rent to scripts and bloods. It is up to them not to like, to have a, somebody who's illegal with five kids. It is up to them, but you cannot dictate. It's a private business.
Well...
That's the law.
Ma'am, I suggest that you're just going to have to watch me because that's exactly what I'm going to do.
I'll see you in a quarter.
I'm kinda comfortable there.
Yeah, Rex, if I may.
Wait a minute, are you, wait a minute, I wanna get to, are you a section eight landlord? Oh, okay, good.
No, I'm not. In fact, I, I shared a little, a brief little story with Mark, and I, I think I had it in my experience in ninety-four, but you, you probably would just laugh if you, you heard the story. I actually don't think there was a conflict between you and the lady that just spoke. I think that there's just a misunderstanding. And again, that's the reason why I courage that maybe, encourage that maybe the solution would be to take a couple of the agencies that currently use the voucher system and let them sit on the, the ad hoc committee, just so that they get a comfortable feeling because I think that maybe that got carried away. I really do. That's just my interpretation.
You know, I'm tired of leaving our destiny in the hands of others. It's our destiny. It should be in the hands of us, meaning the citizens of Lancaster. In this case, it's a regional problem. It should be the citizens of the Antelope Valley, and we should handle it regionally. It should be a regional housing authority for Antelope Valley. We can do that. All we have to do is come together and make that happen. You know, the phenomenal, phenomenal amount of money that the federal government is giving to the housing authority per voucher, you know, I, it's pretty clear to me, it's all the, the number of people or the number of vouchers in the Antelope Valley, we're not getting that level of administrative service money from them. It's, it's us dealing with the problems and someone else getting the, the funding. And that just is intolerable and it has to stop. And I understand that Councilwoman Marcus is well on the way to putting a section eight committee together. If you wanna briefly give us an idea of what's happening?
Well, I understand the lady's concerns, and that's the very person that we want here.
That's right.
And we're not going to go after those people who have real needs and should be on section eight. What we have done, I've sat with staff, we are doing some investigating to find out what we can do with that. We also, I believe a lot of it's gonna have to do with educating the pub, the public on this. The other thing is that I really don't believe the federal government's going to come to our aid, neither is the state, and we have to do local control of this in our best interest. If you read the papers, you see the fraud that goes on, and having had some fraud investigators come in and, and talk to the performance measurement committee, you find out that if they're frauding the system in one area, they're frauding the system in every other area that they possibly can. Those are the people that we are interested in helping them move from the Antelope Valley. The, some other...
Doesn't she say these things really well?
Well, the, the thing of it is, is this is gonna overlap and it's also going to affect those people who are just bad landlords and have rental properties. And, you know, I don't apologize for that either. We've had some great response. I've had many citizens get in touch with me. I'm in the process of getting back with them. We'll soon have a, an informal meeting of some kind with some of these people, and we might just have a barbecue, I don't know. But we're just, we're just investigating and we're trying to find out what's gonna be the best way to, to address this, but we really mean business, and we really are going to go after those people that are not contributing to our, our community, that are harming our community. And like Mayor Paris says, we really mean business.
Good.
Yes. If I could make a, just a comment on some of the things the lady said. And I know that, that the city council before the previous one, you know, we, we initiated some, some... looking into business license regulations in Section 8. And I think everybody up here is clear that we're not looking to go after the disabled or the elderly for what those vouchers are really for. But the, but the Section 8 and the federal program is very complex. And she talks about portability. I don't think she was completely accurate on all the aspects of the portability. But as you said, Mayor Paris, we, there's a lot of money that goes into Section 8, but the enforcement and the managing of it, we've been paying for also. And there's not enough money that goes towards there. And I do disagree with the lady that on one aspect, the federal statute on the housing is a particular right, but the courts have already found that the regulation of that doesn't violate the 14th Amendment, and it's not a protected class. A renter is not a protected class. You actually have to have a protected class that's discriminated against in order to trigger those things. And I think what we're looking at is just a pragmatic approach to controlling it and because we, we're not, we're not running the program, but we're being affected by it. And I think we're, we're going in the right direction. I think you're accurate that we're going to take a very strong stance on it.
Just a short summary. If you're currently defrauding the Section 8 program, get out now or we'll take you out, and we'll use any legal means necessary to do it.
You know what? I also support that, and I think all five of us, I think that's really what we're after, is the fraud. And I also think that, and I appreciate the mayor initiating this, I think we're going to see a significant decrease in crime, besides the fraud that's going on in the system, so.
You know, every community in America is, you know, what they, there was a great article and what it talked about is, in police statistics, areas would go cold. High-crime areas, all of a sudden go cold, there's no crime in them. But you go into the suburbs where there was very low crime, and they go hot. And when they looked at it and studied it, it was the Section 8 issue. And it was because, you know, there, I guess there's some argument to be made that, you know, by moving people in to, with hard-working families, that it elevates everybody. And that might be true if they brought the services too. But they didn't bring the services, you know? And so as a result, the very people they were supposed to be helping are the most victimized. It's, I guarantee you, it's their death rate that's higher. It's their mortality rate from all these diseases because the services just aren't there. It's a terrible problem that we really need to take ownership of and deal with. Which brings me to the discussion of quality-of-life initiatives, and that's what I'm calling all these changes that you're seeing. The Crime Commission or the, what do we call it, the Criminal Justice Commission?
Mayor Paris, I think on the previous issue, you need to take action.
We wanted to take action, we wanted to make a motion on creating the ad hoc committee and appoint--
Oh, we haven't already done that?
No, we haven't.
Okay. So who wants to make that motion?
I'll move that we create a Section 8 ad hoc committee and we appoint Councilmember Marcus as the chairperson.
I'll second that motion.
You know, we've had this discussion, and so let's share it with the folks. It's my view that I want these to be commissions. And because there's a, there's a certain amount of authority that comes with commissions that doesn't come with committees. The problem that the city is having is, you know, they still have to run the city, you know? I keep putting all this stuff on them, and, you know, we're not increasing manpower. The manpower stays the same. And they're doing a remarkable job. But at the same, in what in the past has occurred with commissions is they're staffed by, you know, all these folks here, most of them are at the planning commission, you know, as far as numbers of people, different people. That's not what I'm envisioning with the commissions that we establish that are these ad hoc commissions. But I would, I would prefer to call them commissions, and I think the people that are doing them, that are on them are doing an incredible service to the community, and they should be commissioners and have the stature of a commissioner.
Paul will draw my motion, and I'll remake it, and we'll say that we'll establish a Section 8 commission and make Councilwoman Marcus the chairperson.
I will second that.
And before we vote on it, Mr. Bozignian, is, have I addressed the concerns or?
Yes, you have. I was asking the city attorney if it needed to be ad hoc or not, but we understand the intent of it. So what you call it, we're going to still support it, and we have been.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let's vote. Just want to check what's on it. Now we're on item two, the Quality of Life Initiatives. Where are we on the, the planning commission for the architectural and design?
You adopted that in the consent calendar that says, so in 30 days it takes effect, correct? 30 days it takes effect, and then you can appoint members to that commission.
All right. Well, what I'm going to intend, what I intend to do is--
August 12.
August 12. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah. So when's our next meeting? The 8th?
July 8th is our next meeting.
I will probably appoint at that time, just so everybody's aware. If you haven't got your application in, let's get it in. I can do that, right?
We can--
Yes.
We can place it on the agenda for July 8th to appoint. The committee will, the commission will not be effective till August 12.
Right. Okay, great.
So we will place it on the agenda.
The, just so everybody's aware of what I'm thinking of, is I'm also thinking of an arts commission. Anybody that has any ideas about that should contact me and see how we should develop Most cities have an arts commission that they're charged with in all of the arts, but increasing our cultural awareness and the artistic areas that are available to the citizens. And that's something we're going to take very seriously. But I have indicated to the city manager that he can put these on timelines that are doable. But that doesn't mean we don't get them in motion. And then finally, it comes to the, I called it the Thousand Lives Proposal because it goes back to what we were talking about earlier. Is Dr. Tussaud and Henry Hearns came to me, and they want to start, they want me to help them with a health commission designed to lower our mortality rate. The, it was truly eye-opening to me to learn that in the Antelope Valley, people are dying at a statistically aberrant rate for the rest of the county from renal failure. And the reason they're dying from renal failure is because they lack a can of Ensure once a day. I mean, just a can of Ensure would save these people's lives. And we're not talking about a few, we're not talking about 10. We're talking about hundreds of people who are dying because their kidneys failed, because we're unable to give them a can of Ensure. You know, that, that drink that some of us drank, you know, when we got to a certain age. You'll get there. And I had a discussion with the city manager about that. And health is not a core function of the city. It just isn't. It's, you know, the function of other people. But at the same time, I think it's just simply wrong for us to not do something when we know people are needlessly dying because of neglect. The story that it reminded me of was a few years ago, I got a call from a, it was an employee's, you need to know, it was just, it was a late 50s, woman in her late 50s, and the police were there, and they were getting ready to arrest her for a homicide, actually two homicides, because she left two children in a car. And it was the heat of the summer, and they literally baked to death. She never had a problem before. She was, seemed like a really nice person. She just was neglectful. And of course, she was punished and should have been punished. What's happening to us as a city and an area is something similar to that. You know, the county is letting us bake in our own juices. And it's not by accident. It's all, it, we have to assume it's deliberate. And there are real consequences. We are not taking care of our citizens. And as a result, we have the highest death rate from all kinds of diseases. How is that possible? We have cleaner air, we have wide-open spaces, we, this should be the preferred area to live. Why are our people dying at a faster rate from unnecessary death than other people in the county? It's because they're not providing us the services. It really is that simple. We are not taking care of our people the way they're being taken care of in other parts of the county. I don't want to stand idly by and not say it. At least, we need to say it. We're being abused. It's like the spouse who suffers from spousal abuse, and where she's grateful for any crumbs that are thrown her way. Sometimes I feel that's us, you know? We have a right to our fair share. And so what I intend to do about it is I'm asking Dr. Tussaud and Mayor Hearns to meet with the other city and the county and put together another commission that will seriously address this. The reason I think Dr. Tussaud's the perfect one for it, he has put together a program that's gone nationwide that him and his wife funded without any government assistance that has saved thousands of lives. And he's the most passionate person I've found to do something about this. And he wants to do it, and we want to help him. As a city, we're going to have to find some way to help. One of the things that he mentioned that I think is an excellent idea is just community gardens, you know, so that people can grow the food so they're not dying of malnutrition. You know, they're obese, but they're dying of malnutrition because they don't have the quality of food that's necessary. We need to do something about that, and that's what I would like the council's assistance in doing. And we need to be awfully aggressive with it. Because I think the facts speak for themselves. Or we can wait. We can wait until maybe our death rate is double anyplace else in the, in the county. But that's what they're doing to us. And for whatever reason, people have been afraid to speak out about it, and it's time that we start screaming about it. And I need the citizens of Lancaster's help in doing that. So with that, that's what's on the agenda also. Any discussion? I'm assuming that I have your support in doing whatever's necessary to make this happen.
Mayor Paris, can I just, um--
Yes.
I don't, I'm kind of confused as to how, how do we get started with something like that as a city? And how do we support that? And what does that do to us, you know, financially?
You know, those are the issues that we have to figure out. We just have to figure out how, what to do with them. I believe that the resources are out there. They're just not being directed here. You know, it's sort of like the aid that goes to Africa, you know, it sits on the dock or it goes someplace else. Well, you know, this, we're a major American city. You know, we have a right to our share of the funding. And that's what I think we're going to be going after.
So that's what you're saying, is we'll go elsewhere to get the funding to--
Yes.
To bring in, okay.
Yes. Although the community gardens is something that would be a city-run thing, probably through Parks and Recreation.
Mayor, if I might, I'd like to reiterate that. There are certain things the city already does that we can, we can expand upon, and the statistics were eye-opening. We've already talked to the Parks and Rec Department. We have a lot of focus on healthy lifestyles already in our program. We can up that and maybe deal directly, more directly with nutrition, if that's community gardens or, and/or something else. So there's things we can do. But I do believe that asking Dr. Tussaud, who I know personally and is, is the right person, to put a group together of the entities involved, and we get together and then decide what it is we can do individually and collectively. That's what we need to do. And it will be putting pressure on entities who should be providing more funds to the Antelope Valley. Those things we can do on our own.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that's it for this week. But if any of you have any ideas, I'll be happy to walk with you on Tuesday and Thursday, and we can talk about them. City manager, you have any announcements?
Just one, sir. I'd like to thank the staff and the downtown businesses and the community for supporting the Celebrate Downtown Lancaster last Friday. In my, I don't know if it was the most well-attended, I believe it was, but it was the most enjoyable for me. And our staff, all departments did a wonderful job. I'd like to single out Lori Butts, who's our special events manager who did a great job with that.
You know, I happened to be present Friday night, and of course, I was explaining to Mark Benenazir that I think it was the best attended. And after, after making this statement, we had to say hats off or hats on to Lori Butts. They were making hats out of a paper sack, and I think that was a home run. I never saw some, I thought it was like the Mad Hatter night or something, but I must have counted literally hundreds of people in the line. I mean, I didn't wait in line, but there was, I think the line was 50 to 100 people deep at times. But I think it was the most well-attended event we've had since inception. So, but Lori did a great job. I can't believe the creativity there. And the entertainment was great too, as well.
And Lori represents that. There were literally 100 staff that worked with that program.
That's the one thing I'd like to mention. We have a team of people that plan these out over the course of a year, all the events that Lori oversees, but it takes that whole team. You know, maintenance workers that start at 6:00 AM and finish at 1:00 in the morning to recreation staff that came in mid-morning and worked till 11:30 at night. And it was a big group, but Lori does a good job of orchestrating that.
City clerk?
Okay, this is the time for people to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. You may fill out a speaker card. You'll find them at the back of the council chambers. And we respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible so that if necessary, the council, the city manager, the staff can, can contact you later. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, please notice there are three lights. The green light will come on when you begin, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the city council, and we appreciate your cooperation. State law does prohibit the city council and the redevelopment agency from taking action on items that are not on your, on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. And for future reference additionally, just like to say that beginning with the meeting tonight, if you are watching at home or if you plan to look at this later, with our agenda, you'll see a link for the staff report as well as any attachments along with the staff report. So this is a first for us, putting all the attachments on, unless the staff report actually states they're not available. So we wanted to let you know that you can access those online. And with that, you can call the speakers.
Thank you. Mrs. Dolver, no, 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 no. I'm going to hold you to last, and I'm going to treat yours as a report. You've done a phenomenal job of putting this together, so I'll give you as much time as you need, okay? And why don't we start with Mr. Belko?
Wasn't quite expecting to go first, but on March 25th of this year, the city council meeting, Mr. Cilio had, on council agenda number three, had approached the council on the factor of hit mailers that had come about. Specifically, one of them that you mentioned was the Cilio family hit mailer. And I wanted to speak about that tonight. During the council meeting, Mr. Latanzi had approached, and she had asked Mr. Smith if he had anything to do with the mailing of the hit mailer. And he, in so many words, said he didn't, or stated about that, saying he didn't. So tonight, I wanted to bring up a document that I have here. It's a declaration of Ron Smith, which was signed by him on April 23rd of this year. And basically, this was in conjunction with court case, excuse me, I have to take a proper class to read this, court case number BC 388069. This document states his involvement with designing these hit mailers, specifically three hit mailers that he designed. The Cilio one, and two other ones that are right here. I will show you. I will show you. And paragraph number six on this declaration states that that my role in the creation of the mailers was that of graphic designer working for the printers. And referring to three hit mailers. Now, my understanding is, since you were up here and you lied basically to everybody, saying you didn't have anything to do with the mailing of these hit mailers, why you were even being allowed to remain on the council for that matter. I've taken upon myself to approach Perron Studios since they hold the trademarks and copyrights to the Godfather franchise. And I approached their general attorney by the name of, let's see, excuse me, Al Perry, I believe his name was. And he was very interested to get the information regarding the designer of this hit mailer. And I sent him a copy of the hit mailer and also the declaration signed by you. If you would like to see copies of this, I can show them to you. Also, I contacted a gentleman by the name of... Where's he at? On the back here. Russ Remetta from the Order of the Sons of Italy, who had complained in a article in the paper, a letter to the editor, about the, basically, the slanderous remarks that were put forth in the hit mailer that Mr. Smith designed. So... And we want copies of this. I'd be glad to give them to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belka. And now if we could go to David Paul?
Mr. Mayor and council members, it's been a fun night. 5 o'clock had a lot of energy in it today when I walked into the room. Mayor Paris, I'm like you, I like concise things. I like to read. When I do my Friends of the Library sales, I pick up books and I'll go 30 seconds through a book and I'll learn something. I found one recently that was the history of the Antelope Valley. And I haven't corroborated this with any other sources. But the book is about the early history and how in 1891, we were just getting going and there was a historic nine-year drought till 1900. The wells dried up, there was no water, and it was very tough times. Put the development of the whole Antelope Valley back. These are the kind of things that can happen again. I just thought about that. The other thing I want to talk about was the lady with the Section 8 and her concerns. I have a beautiful street. I've lived there since all the houses were built. And on my street, I can point out three different homes that are Section 8 that have multiple people living in there. Some of them look like they've been in prison and don't have any right to have the vouchers. And I don't even know who holds the vouchers. So that's part of the problem. These homes where people come and live and there's three or four groups of extended families. This is who we're going after, I hope, and not the disabled or the seniors. So I wanted to talk about that. The other one was the other day, yesterday on the news. It was very... I was very heartened to see your part where you broke from tradition and did something different than read what they had you to read. Safe and sane fireworks. It's insane. Frederick the Great said that artillery adds dignity to what might just be a brutal brawl. And everybody likes bombs bursting in air and stuff like that. Everybody likes things blowing up. But the difference is that it's not a constitutional right of anybody's to do that on my street while I'm trying to have peace and protect my... I have an overhang I built to block the shade. And I found out how flammable this stuff is when I was putting it up. I had a cigar in my mouth and I got a little close, burned a hole right through it. So, you know, one of these ball rockets coming down and that stuff will just burn my backyard up. And so I have a vested interest in seeing that these things don't go on. And my point is that if we just drive down the street or whatever, we can help. And I'd like to see that. I mean, we were promised an aggressive approach to it for the last couple of years. And I would like to see the aggression up because, you know, I'd like to see somebody in my street. And it's pretty dynamic. I love all my neighbors and stuff like that. But there's a lot of unsafe things going on, a lot of children running around and these bombs blowing up. I mean, it's very unsettling to me. Ms. Brubaker knows. I've talked to her about that. So that's what I'd like to see is just a little more enforcement of the fireworks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Mayor, if I might, I'd invite Mr. Paul and anyone else to visit the city's website for numbers to recall, to report on any violations, and also about our Fourth of July celebration.
Thank you. You know, I'm finding that I'm getting emails reporting various criminal activity. And I'm really impressed with the sheriff's department's response to that. And what happens to those emails is I forward them on to the city manager. Within moments, they're forwarded to the sheriff's department or the Section 8 investigators. And, you know, a week later, I get a response from the person who sent it to us that all of a sudden, the problem disappeared. I don't think it's a coincidence. You know, feel free to use my email address on any of that stuff and we'll take action. It's... The sheriff's department is just doing an amazing job. Uh... Ms. Dar... I always have trouble with your name. I'm sorry. I'll work on it.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Paris, distinguished council members and staff, my name is Marilyn Darrell Rumpel. And I'm speaking to you tonight, hoping to ask for your assistance for a one-day workshop to start with. When we think of abuse, we think of violence perpetrated by people who have power over others. For instance, an adult abusing a child. It's hard for us to imagine a child abusing a parent, but this happens. And the figures below indicate it happens often. This jar represents the percentage of single-parent homes. 100%. It could be Lancaster, Antelope Valley, or nationwide. This is 100%. This jar indicates the possible number, percentage of parents who are abused in single-parent homes by their adolescent child. This indicates 29%. To me, that's a large percent. It's on the high end, of course, but it's possible that happens. Percentage of parents abused by their adolescent child in a two-parent home can be as high as 18%. Writes Barbara Catrelle in Parent Abuse, The Abuse of Parents by Their Teenage Children. There is a severe lack of resources, information, and supports. Many parents feel that resources available to them blame them and cause them to feel defeated rather than offer them support. They often suffer abuse in isolation because of the shame, lack of public awareness attached to the issue. To suggest, Catrelle continues, that victims are solely to blame for their abuse is a gross oversimplification. Instead of jumping to conclusions and blaming parents, there are more healthy ways to stop parent abuse. Lancaster could break some ground and make a first step toward addressing this problem by hosting a one-day workshop similar to one outlined in the National Clearinghouse on Family Violence, the Public Health Agency of Canada. And the reason this information is from Canada is because it's so rare to find any information whatsoever from the United States. And the outline for that workshop is in that packet of information I gave you. A one-day workshop to help bring an issue to the open. Parents or others who are concerned about the issue of parent abuse could help pull together a committee of people who will design and organize the workshop. Perhaps a combination of police officers, social workers, therapists, community...
Excuse me. Killed the button. Thank you.
I'm almost done.
No, no. Take your time.
And parents who have gone through the abuse may be interested in getting together to talk about the topic. Often, when people begin to post... To pool their experiences, they find that collectively, they have a great deal of knowledge about the topic. The information gathered could be presented to parents in a safe, nurturing, caring atmosphere rather than attacking the parent and blaming them for the abuse. I ask the city of Lancaster to please consider assisting with putting such a workshop together. I've done one in the past, several years ago, I admit. It's been a while. It wasn't very successful. And I think one of the reasons it wasn't very successful is because the parents don't want to come out and admit they're being abused by their child. Because in many cases, they get attacked. Well, it's your fault. What did you do to the child? You're a bad parent. You're a poor parent. And they just... It breaks them. I'm asking for perhaps a room being donated for such a workshop, perhaps help with publicity, and perhaps a little guidance with this. Although I've spoken to two people already who have offered to speak at such a workshop. And I'm sure if the city was willing to put their stamp on this and say, yes, we want to be a part of it, I could get many more professionals participate and help. That's my speech.
Thank you. I appreciate the work you did on this. Now, the city manager's over there thinking, oh, oh. What's he going to do now?
Can I toss an idea out there?
But before you do, Marilyn, don't go anywhere. What I would like to do is I'd like to meet with you and I would like to make this happen. And I don't think this is going to be a problem.
Thank you.
If we put a goal date on it, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we'd like to do is after you meet, we can have staff meet with... And I think we can help out.
Okay.
Particularly with facilities and publicity.
Yeah. And let's... I mean, we'll put it on the radio, we'll put it on television, and we'll make this happen.
Thank you very much.
So if you'd contact Mr. Bozignian and we will absolutely do this. You know, let's set it out far enough so that it can be, you know, done well. But I think this is something that's sorely needed.
Thank you.
And we will do whatever we can to assist you. Go ahead, Mr. Cilio.
I just think that we should, for consideration, should look at partnering with Antelope Valley Hospital. And that they already have in the last year or so. They've stepped up their community lecture series. And they have a history. They were instrumental in starting the SARS program, the Sexual Assault Response Service. They have a history of dealing with sensitive assault-type of issues. And I think they would be a good addition to the effort that Marilyn's trying to put forward.
Marilyn, this is exactly what I was hoping to see from the citizens. And so let's make this the test case and just see how much support you do get and how successful we can be. Let's do a home run on this, okay?
Thank you very much.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Where are my notes? Okay. And Mr. Bozignian, can you get back to us as to what the target date is as soon as we have one? Okay, great. Thank you. Any additional comments from the city council?
For that item or for everything? For that item or...
For anything.
Can I take you to task on one thing?
Of course you can.
I'll be the last one to say the Antelope Valley Hospital emergency room is not impacted and impacted severely. But you mentioned heart attacks. And that is the one thing they do exceptionally well. There's something in treatment of heart attacks called door-to-balloon time. And that's the time it takes when you hit the back door of the emergency room to the time that you're in the cath lab and that artery is open. The national standard is 60 minutes. Antelope Valley Hospital is somewhere in the 45, 48-minute range. They're 20% better than the national average. Do we have difficulties in the emergency room? Absolutely. And I know you picked that because it's something everyone can relate to. But boy, that's one thing they do exceptionally well. And I just want to hold them up for the good things they do.
I apologize for that. I wasn't aware of that. I'll save my heart attack for Lancaster.
I thought you just made a good point so you would come to Antelope Valley, not Lancaster.
Oh, that's what I meant.
Okay.
You know, I think we all recognize that, especially the emergency room department, does a superhuman job. And I didn't mean to imply they weren't. But we have reached a tipping point. And we have overburdened them to the point that we're all endangered. And we're going to have to start shaving away at it, one stroke at a time. But I think that 98% of the citizens want to do precisely that. And that's what we're going to do. But I apologize to you and Antelope Valley Hospital.
Well, last time I...
It is remarkable.
Last time I mentioned Antelope Valley Hospital, I got a phone call from the administrator the next day. So I thought I'd try and make that good now.
Oh, so you were kissing up to the administrator.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned till 5 o'clock, July 8th. And we look forward to seeing you.